The next bill that the committee will hear is Bill LO twenty-one dash zero 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 six Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan for the purpose of the committee holding a quarterly, a quarterly, a hearing quarterly to review crime statistics for the police department and to monitor progress of the biennial Violence Prevention Plan. This, this bill was introduced on March eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and it was sponsored by myself, Councilman Mark Conway. And as an opening, at our last quarterly crime stats meeting that took place on June thirtieth of this year, there were one hundred and sixty-six homicides and over three hundred shootings. Today, we, we were close to two hundred and sixty homicides recorded for the year and we're on pace to surpass the grim milestone of three hundred murders for the seventh consecutive year in a row. The rapid pace of violence that we experience is detrimental not only to the long-term sustainability of our city, but to the families experiencing this violence every day. If we don't change course and inject some sense of urgency in how we're addressing crime, more families will continue to leave the city. And those that remain will continue to live in unease and fear. Crime is prevalent because of two dropping forces, of course, the people who commit those crimes and the places in which they occur. During today's meeting, I'm going to ask the police department and the mayor's office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, both limit their presentations to about ten minutes. And I'd like for the police department to give us an overview of their place-based and people-based strategies and what impact these initiatives have had in decreasing crime. And I'd like for the mayor's office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement to brief us on the implementation of the Gun Violence Reduction Strategy. As our crime stats meetings move forward, I'm requesting that the police department focus their presentations on the following items. First, the top ten patrol posts or sectors that experienced the highest incidents of crime and the data for those areas. The people and place-based strategies being implemented in those areas and what outcomes they're producing. And identification of the quality of life problems that affect those neighborhoods and what those agencies, the and what agencies the police department has partnered with to remedy those issues. And finally, an update on the data metrics and strategies we're implementing to reduce domestic violence and youth violence incidents. The goal of this new approach is to focus these meetings on ensuring that the appropriate law enforcement strategies and tactics are in place, but also that we're identifying and addressing the economic and social stressors that drive crime, such as poverty, unemployment, housing instability, poor health, and lack of educational resources. With that, I'm going to open up the floor to to the agencies, of course, please state your name. And first, I will hand off to the commissioner and the police department. Commissioner Harrison.
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway. I'm Commissioner Michael Harrison. Thank you for holding this hearing today so that I and other members of my executive team can brief you and the residents watching at home on what's happening within the Baltimore Police Department. Mr. Chairman, I understand we have three segments in which to discuss the slide that was emailed to you earlier today. First segment, Colonel Kevin Jones and Colonel Richard Worley will provide an update on crime statistics, arrests, closure rates, and will offer some insight into the individual district ride crime plans. In the second segment, Deputy Commissioner Jim Gillis will discuss where we are with budget as well as staffing and recruiting. And then the third and final segment, Deputy Commissioner Michael Sullivan will provide an update on consent decree, implementation efforts, then Deputy Commissioner NATO will discuss where we are in terms of the department's misconduct complaints. We have a lot of information to go through in a short time, so I won't take up much time, but I want to point out that we have members of our executive team here to answer any and all questions as they arise. We look forward to a conversation with our members and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. And before we jump into it, as I, as the commissioner alluded to, we'll break it up into three sections and allow council members to ask questions after each section. So we'll have a first round of questions, a second round of questions, and a final third round of questions. With that, I hand it back over to BPD.
Good afternoon. Counsel President, this is Colonel Jones. I have a little technical issue. I'm looking at one computer, but you're hearing me on another. See if I can see. Trying to work on the, the echo. So as you mentioned, unfortunately, right now, we're sitting at two hundred and thirty-five homicides for the year as compared to two hundred and forty-seven in the previous year, an increase of four percent. And non-fatal shootings, we are currently at five hundred twenty-five versus five hundred and thirty-seven in two thousand and twenty, which is minus two point two percent. As we go over the crime year-to-date rate, we are currently in two thousand and twenty-one, currently at two hundred and forty-six versus one hundred and ninety-seven, a percentage increase of twenty-four percent. Carjackings are down minus twelve percent, three sixteen versus three fifty-nine. Commercial robberies are up twenty percent, four eighty-eight versus four oh five. Street robberies are down twenty percent, one hundred, twelve hundred twenty-one versus fifteen twenty-eight. Our residential robberies are down sixteen percent, three thirty-one versus three ninety-four in two thousand and twenty. Our aggravated assaults are down one percent, three thousand nine hundred and eleven versus three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven. Arsons are down five percent. Auto thefts are up five percent, two thousand three hundred and twenty-four versus two thousand two hundred and four. Burglaries are down eighteen percent, twenty-five hundred versus three thousand eighty-six. Larceny's are down seventeen percent, and larceny from autos are also down in reference to larceny from autos are up fifteen percent as well as I volley through my computers. So what we will say, as you mentioned in reference to our, do you want to be going to the top posts first, sir? Or in reference to the people and place-based strategy?
We can, we can start with the top, top posts.
Yeah. So what I will say is, in the interest of time, the top posts throughout the districts for violence right now, three thirty-one posts, which is that Broadway East in the Eastern District. And then we have one eleven posts in the Central, nine twenty-two, and the Southern, one eleven, one fourteen in the Central, which is that downtown area. Eight thirty-five post, which is around Irvington, and it goes on and so on and so forth. In the interest of time, I know what you've mentioned in reference to homicides and non-fatal shootings, let's just dive into that three thirty-one post for the Eastern District. We do realize that the Eastern District unfortunately has suffered some issues around that three thirty-one post, which is that Broadway East. Eastern District has been dealing with a issue along that corridor that has had tentacles in reference to some geographical beefs in reference to individuals being currently released from jail, coming back into the community as well as just some territorial and other beefs over just poor conflict resolution and things that may not be dealt with in reference to like drug corners. It may just be not able to, you know, arguments over a woman, arguments over this, arguments over that. What I will say for the Eastern District, what they have done is each district is responsible for a weekly crime plan. So I'll go over strategically certain ones for that Broadway East. So for that three thirty-one post on the Eastern District, with their weekly crime plan is broken down into each shift is given weekly objectives, but they are responsible of doing on that three thirty-one post. So for example, their Adam Schiff's deployment plan is focusing on deploying to the nineteen-hundred block of Bel Air near the BP gas station, the nineteen-hundred block of Collington Street, where they, where they're looking for increased foot traffic. They're deploying additional resources when available. So when the Chief of Patrol's Office, the Citywide Robbery or CID is able to give non-discretionary units to those problematic districts, then what it is, what happens is those commanders of those units reach out to the districts to see where they need those units placed and deployed real time. So that would be, you know, basically for three thirty-one posts. So the same thing is given to all three shifts. So the Baker and Charlie shift also have directives that their officers are doing as specific as probability, days, times, hours, when they're supposed to be out there. And then specifics of what exactly those commanders are looking for in reference to either enforcement or engagement. So enforcement could be traffic. It could be some kind of initiative with a warrant. It could be doing some knock and talks with gore, home, gore offenders. It could be engagement with the community, getting out on foot and engaging either business checks, walking a specific post. But also doing directed patrol, realizing that sometimes with offices in specific areas, it pushes sometimes the crime into other buffer zones. So directed patrol plan would be the proper response to that. What I would say is for those posts so far, so if we go into like three thirty-one posts for the homicides and shootings this year, I will tell you that log, there were two thousand incidents of foot that were logged. There were three thousand, over three thousand business checks, one hundred and thirty-one warrant attempts, five hundred and sixty-five car stops. Directed patrol was sixteen hundred incidents. Field interviews were one hundred and nine for a grand total of seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two separate CAD incidents that cover. So this does not specifically go into arrests, but it gives you kind of an idea of what the Eastern District has been doing on those posts. I will say the same is for other districts. Although the Eastern District does break it down by posts. So then eight thirty-four posts, eight twenty-four posts would be the most problematic homicide and shooting posts for the Southwestern District, which is your Irvington community. The Southwest District, the Southern District, because they've been having some dead, some issues around Brooklyn. And then the Western District has had some issues around the Gilmore Homes and some others. Their districts, when they submit their weekly crime plans, it is specific to that post and really not specific to the different shifts, which is just the interpretation that those district commanders have. But doubling back to the Eastern District, I will say that when you look at output for resources, their district action teams for the last ninety days have had thirty-six total arrests, twenty-one handguns, seven arrests for narcotics, fourteen warrant arrests, that was one arrest for stolen auto. They executed thirty-five search and seizure warrants and recovered five handguns that are pending DNA analysis and currently have four active, active high-level investigations on for that DAT team. I will also say during that time with the utilization of our special operations section, which deals with our SWAT Canon units and our SOS, which is our Motors Unit, I will say that for the ninety-day time period for the Eastern District, there were thirteen arrests from SOS in that time period. And then that was a focus of bank checks, foot and motorized patrol within the Eastern District. Of those thirteen arrests, a lot of them encompass warrant arrests served within that district. So we're trying to get a total holistic approach throughout the agency of not just relying, not relying on the district, but also our non-discretionary units to also have some kind of response for that district. Focusing for not only the Eastern District, but then in, like I said, the Southern, which is Cherry Hill, has been an issue for Cherry Hill, which we've noticed an increase throughout the Southern District for that. And then, like I said, Irvington for the Southwest District is how we focus our, our patrol. What I will tell you is that not only through the weekly crime plans that we have for the districts, we also have a summer crime plan for those districts where it is expected that we they have identified strategic areas within each and every district where they think that they can have a direct impact on the crimes in that area. So for the Eastern District, that three thirty-one post, which is that Broadway East, was what they identified as their summer crime plan focus. I will say that, you know, so for the Southeastern District, they notified, they advised that Baltimore Highland was theirs. The Eastern would be the Bel Air Road Corridor. The Northern District would be the forty-seven to fifty-four hundred block of York Road within a fifty-foot radius of that. I would also go on to say for the additional districts, Northwest focused on their Belvedere Corridor, Haywood Park Heights Garrison, the Western District was depending north. Southwest was portions of their crime district to include Carroll Park. And as I said, for the Southern, it was Brooklyn. And I know that Brooklyn did have an overall decrease of ten percent. Now, mechanisms that we're using to track these is through our COMSTAT process as well as our weekly crime calls. Crime calls are Monday, Wednesday, and Friday at twelve o'clock. They normally last between an hour and an hour and a half. With the utilization of our data-driven strategy and the analytics and historical data, we formulate the codes that the officers are using to be foot crime, the arrests, motorized patrol, business checks. We use all of these CAD codes that are captured in communications through data-driven strategy and analytics, and they put this in a dashboard. We then use that dashboard to see where the districts are, how they are performing, those that are underperforming. And then we go down, we bring that up, that is a crime call or the two districts that we bring up at COMSTAT, and we go over these metrics to see where the districts are, what obstacles they are facing, not only what, how they are utilizing in-district personnel, but the out-of-district personnel. Are they achieving their metrics? And if not achieving their metrics, are they staying with the goal that is in place? Or are they looking to optimize and change the goal for a better outcome? We do that specifically in COMSTAT, holding them accountable, accountable not only for their own resources, but I said, the additional resources provided to them to include the support services to patrol, be it admin, CID, and any city stakeholders and resources outside like Muncie, DPW, DOT, recognizing are there any kind of structural or geographical issues as far as lighting, trees that are blocking the way, trash. So working holistically with our partners in reference to trying to find an all-around approach to addressing these. I know it is indicative of our district commanders to reach out to their community, see our community presidents as well as the communities in a whole to find out, are we matching the deliverables that we want? Because sometimes when encoding and decoding, when a community says they want a response, we see it as putting cops on the dot, but they may, that may not necessarily be what that community needs. And I think through the Neighborhood Policing Plan, getting out there and identifying what exactly having those hard conversations and real conversations with those communities to understand what exactly are they looking for in reference to deliverables from this agency. And continuing, sir, if we go on to give me one second. So I went over that. Um, I will go over briefly the district shooting comparisons. What we have seen so far, as I had mentioned on that three thirty-one post, the Western District had some issues in reference to, with me, seven thirty-one post, which is that Greater Mondomond area. I mentioned eight twenty-four, which is the Irvington and that old Frederick Road Corridor, and then the Brooklyn or nine thirty-four posts, nine thirteen posts in the Southern District. As I mentioned, each district is responsible for identifying these crimes and these crime patterns. So what we do real time after each incident, myself or my lieutenant colonels reach out to those districts through this portal called Evitale. And the question is that we ask real time of not only the district commanders, but their, their shift commanders is were there any precursors to the incident? When did the incident come out? What time did the first officer arrive on that scene? Is there any connectivity not only within the district, but between any previous homicides or shootings or robberies or whatever else may be driving the crime? But is there holistically any connectivity between this, between the other eight districts? So these are questions that we ask real time. Sometimes it's early on in the investigation, so it may not be brought up at that time, but through data-driven strategy, analytics, historical knowledge from our intel officers and our DAT team and our Citywide, not Citywide, our district detective unit, they work together to normally provide us questions the next day during that Monday, Wednesday, and Friday crime calls. I will say that in reference to improving our system, because there can always be an improvement of our system of working not only with the community, working with our hospitals in reference to their trauma response team to identify what's going on with those individuals who are individuals of victims of violence, trying to get them to be an advocate to speak with us. Because what we normally find unfortunately, as we all have noted, with these non-fatal shooting victims, there is a reluctance to tell us what's going on. Even recently, as of the, it was a triple now a quadruple, quadruple shooting on the nine hundred block of Broadway in that Eastern District. We had an individual who was subsequently involved in that victim of that shooting, but who did not come to the hospital until today. So that delays our understanding of how vast the crime may be. And then those individuals who are there not being cooperative with telling us what it's doing. So there's a lot of reliance on the community, getting the information out there via flyers, via our communication with the community, either through the commanders. Community meetings are reaching out through their intel offices, but also the utilization of our ShotSpotter network, the utilization of our LPR system and CityWatch, and our partners, both federally and state in reference to targeting of individuals who are driving this crime. I will say, sir, for myself, going forward with shooting arrests, I will say that currently non-fatal shooting suspects, we have ninety-two arrested year-to-date. Twenty-six of those suspects have had no prior arrests.
Colonel Jones? I, I hate to cut you off because I'm really, really appreciating what you're saying. Can we touch on the homicide and shooting arrests? And then I want to open the floor to questions from the committee.
Yes, sir. I will pass it to Colonel Worley.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll be pretty brief with the, you can see the district homicide comparisons. Unfortunately, our biggest challenge is still seem to be in the Western, Eastern District. Last year, the Southwest kind of escalated to number one, but they've now, they, they are actually down a little this year. And the Northwest is right up in the, in the thick of, I think they have thirty-eight homicides this this year. The good news is the Northern and Northeast are having very good years. The Northeast by far, you can see they're fifty percent down in homicides, which is extraordinary considering they had thirty-one last year, they're at fifteen. And the Northeast, the Northern is down as well, around thirty-two percent. So some of our struggles are still in the Eastern and Western. Mainly that's, that's historically the way it's been. We are making some progress in those districts. The Western has a, it's very difficult to get
Colonel Worley can talk on the homicide and shooting arrests?
Yeah.
Before we jump into the
Year-to-date, we've got, year-to-date, we've got ninety-two homicide suspects have been arrested, nineteen, you can see with no prior arrests, seventy-three previous arrests, had previous arrests, and thirty-eight repeat violent offenders. And then Colonel Jones already went over the shooting arrests.
So as I said, for the shooting arrests, there were screen, ninety-two non-fatal shooting suspects have been arrested year-to-date. Of that ninety-two, twenty-six suspects had no priors. Sixty-six suspects had a previous record. Forty of those individuals were repeat violent offenders. I will say currently, right now, as we would transition to the clearance rate for non-fatal shootings, we currently sit at twenty-six point seven percent for non-fatal shooting clearance rate as opposed to nineteen point nine percent in two thousand and twenty. The national average for non-fatal shooting occurrences is twenty-six point one percent. What I will say is while we're, we're right slightly above the national average, I am no way satisfied with this. What I did is I pulled the current, I pulled ten-year averages for the city for the last ten years. And the ten-year average for non-fatal shooting currents would, occurrences would be thirty percent. That's what I am striving for and more. What we have done through the Chief of Patrol's Office with the direction of Lieutenant Colonel Bartonis is we're focusing on, as already in homicide, creating a DDU stat, DDU of course being our district detective unit, where we're calling the DDUs once a week, pulling them in, doing random spot checks and audits of their cases to see where they are in reference to Detectives One-O-One. Are they doing the things that they're said they're doing in the timely manner to ensure closure rates? We're also creating a shooting database scorecard where we're holding each and every supervisor of these detective units, but detectives responsible. So we have a mechanism in place to show where each and every district is, where there's room for improvement. We're identifying obstacles in reference to there may be uneven caseloads amongst the detectives, or there may be poor procedures that are not being followed in reference to better practices out there. So that's what we're looking in reference to, increasing our clearance rate going forward. I think we have had success, but by no means am I satisfied with where we are. I think we realize not only the Colonel Worley and myself, but there are more than just numbers. There are families, there are faces, there are individuals behind these incidents. They have spider webs. Being a city, born and raised in the city, I know it. I hear it every week. I get calls from people personally. I hear things in reference to people I grew up with, or new, or friends and family. So it hits me differently, not to say that it does not affect all of our officers, because I know it does. I see the scenes of the officers that I go out to and how it affects them. So we're constantly pushing, striving better for a better Baltimore, because we know we can be. But we know through our partners, be it Muncie, we get DPW, DOT, Wolford Downtown Partnership, other grassroots organizations that, you know, it's going to take all of us coming together through this, through our Neighborhood Policing Plan plans to address not only those, not only those individuals of trauma, but what is the best and most effective way to reach them, to remove them from either being a victim or from being a suspect of this crime.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel Jones and Colonel Worley. Super, super duper helpful, and I appreciate the, the amount of detail that you guys are able to provide on some of our most troubled areas. I want to just clarify quickly for the clearance rates. Do you have a estimation or do you have solid numbers on the breakdown between exceptional clearances and actual arrests?
I do not have them offhand, so.
Okay.
Provide that in the follow-up.
That would be much appreciated. Thank you. To that end, I'm going to open up the floor to questions from the committee. If you don't mind taking down the slideshow for a little bit. So I, one, I want to acknowledge, I noted a pretty significant dip in, in in, in violence in the Northeast, in the Northeastern and the Northern Districts. I'm really curious, just first and foremost, what are we seeing there? Why, where is the success coming from? Do we understand what drivers are helping us see that significant drop? What we saw was a fifty percent decrease in I think homicides in the Northeast and a thirty percent decrease in the Northern. Do we have any, any sense of what's working well there?
So specifically for me, for the patrol division, I will say that, you know, you have a pretty strong commander in the Northern District with Jeff Shorter. I think he gets it. I think he's, his follow-through. And because of the sheer number of lower cases that they get, it gives them the opportunity to really triage and work those cases in the Northern District. So I think they're pretty strong with that, as well as their, their tenant that's over top of their DDU DAT team. For the Northeastern District, I will say specifically, they had a transition homicide commander that is now there as their major in Steve Homan. Steve has that vast background of homicide, so I know he brings that knowledge to his DDU, giving that introspection of what's going on with those cases. I will say the main focus for the reduction, I believe, in the Northeastern District is Steve would have acknowledged that coming in, there was a transition period where he was still trying to get his acclimated to patrol coming from that CID mindset. And we were, unfortunately, we were digging into Steve because we were not seeing the numbers that we wanted in reference to proactivity along some of those main thoroughfares like Bel Air Road and other areas within that district. I think once he acknowledged that, you know, some things that he was not doing and looking at, that once he became familiar with it through the COMSTAT process, through police stat, through crime calls, we were not giving up on this. And through those dashboards that provided, are provided through data-driven strategy, we were holding him and his people accountable for that. He realized it. And then I believe because he started giving more metrics and specifics and put things in place in reference to insight and inspection, I think he got what he wanted. I think the idea is that we push this a lot, Colonel Worley and myself and the PC, is that you really have to inspect what you expect. I mean, giving people the orders to do something, you also have to look within your own district analytical team, but also reaching out to data-driven strategy to make sure that what you're getting in those specific areas, be it time, be it police in the correct area, be it operational necessities and engagement. Are you getting that? And if you're not getting it, why aren't you getting it? What are the obstacles to achieving that? And if those obstacles can be addressed? If not, is, is what you're providing to that area the necessary dosage and response that that area may need to address that area's crime?
And for the, for the CID side, one of the reasons they're, they are to the districts with two of the highest clearance rates in the city for homicide. The Northeast has an eighty-six percent clearance rate for homicides, and the Northern has a fifty percent. And then I do have the answer. We have twenty-three cases cleared by exception in homicide this year. Twenty of those cases were cleared by exception because they were charged federally. So there's really only three cases that were cleared by exception because a prosecution was declined.
Yeah, super duper helpful. Thank, I appreciate the insight, and I definitely want to co-sign Major, Major Shorter and Major Homan, who've been great partners. Major, Major Shorter and Major Holman, who've been great partners, certainly for myself, as we try to address some of the issues that we've seen in the last couple of weeks, but they've been phenomenal. So I want to thank you guys. To that question, to that, and I want to open up the floor to a question, a single question, because there are two other parts to this presentation and we want to make those brief. You will have an opportunity to ask two more rounds of questioning, but I want to open up questions to the committee and to any other council members that are on the line. Councilman Ramos and Councilman Burnett, I got you after. Councilman Ramos and Cohen after that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you colleagues. Also want to echo the partnership that we have with Northern District and Northeast District majors and sergeants has been invaluable. And I think because they're very good at also working with community. And so I, I'm knocking on some wood, so those statistics don't go the other way, but I'm, I'm confident that I, I value, very much value the partnership with them. At some point in time, I'll ask about the specific problem that we have in our district with carjackings. Because it's been a lot. And again, both majors have been very helpful and on it. But I, my question was just about a definition of shooting. I've had a couple of discharges in my district that then are not considered shootings. But I thought if you, you know, shoot a gun, that it's a shooting. But apparently it's not a shooting if somebody's not hit, right?
You were correct, ma'am. So what we classify as a non-fatal shooting is we have an actual victim who is either grazed, who actually has a bullet that has entered their body and are treated for that. If, unfortunately, if the individual is discharging a firearm, it's considered a discharging. And at that point, depending on if there is nothing struck, that's what you have. It may be also a shot-spotted incident where it's been classified as not a discharging based on if a vehicle backfired, if a construction site had some kind of sound that may have triggered our trap, our shot-spotted. I will say that in the, in the, in, in going through a discharge, if at some point a building or vehicle is struck, then that's a destruction of property that is associated with this discharging. And then the appropriate report will be taken at that.
Yeah, because I guess, let me allow one question. The, the issue is just that, you know, I've had three discharges, but it's very scary for people, even if it's not that somebody got hit. So I want to make sure that the statistics are still telling us that there's still something going on. Somebody's got a gun.
No, so you're exactly right. So normally what we do, so on our weekly crime calls, every day when we go over the crime for the last, over the weekend, on Monday, the last two days on Wednesday, the last two days on Friday, what we will ask is for my portion of the crime call that I cover, I go over non-fatal shootings and connectivity and where we are with investigative support and resources. And then before I pass it back to citywide, I mean CID for their portion, I go over shot-spotted alerts, dischargings and pointing at's. Because there are, these are potential incidents that can result in a citizenry being injured. So there's a response of, a response from the district that I demand, that they normally give us in reference to what was going on that day. Is it has any connectivity to any previous violence? Is it something isolated to itself? And then they investigate that. What we will say is our shot-spotted system, when the officers go out that night canvas, if they do not find anything evidentiary value to submit for processing, I will say our K-9 unit is normally dispatched the very next day in those same areas during daylight hours with the use of our dogs to follow up with any evidentiary evidence that may not have been found during the canvas with the officer. So we take our dischargings and shoot and pointing at seriously, because like you said, these are potential incidents that did not thankfully result in, you know, the harm of a person, but it's definitely a possible catalyst and something that we need to keep on our radar.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you all. It was, one of the slides noted that sexual assault was up twenty-four percent. Is, is there, I guess, well, the, the question I had was the clearance, what, what is the current clearance rate for sexual assault rate? As when we had this hearing a few months ago, it was at zero percent. And there was some, obviously some dialogue about that number. So just curious as to where we are now.
I can, I can get that for you in a follow-up, and I don't think it was ever, it should have never been. I think there was, had to be something wrong with those numbers because it was never at zero, because most of our cases are where the victim and the suspect know each other. There's very few stranger, stranger rapes. And the reason I think that the, the reporting numbers are up is because of the better reporting systems and their different requirements that we have. And of course, the changes we made a couple of years ago in the way we handle those cases. So we handle those cases much better now than we did years ago. Unfortunately, it, it means rising rates, but that's what we want to do. We want to capture every single incident. But I, I can get back to you with the clearance rates. I'll look for it while we're talking, talking through some other questions real quick if I can find it. I didn't want to give them.
I mean, I would respectfully push back a little bit. I mean, we, we did have a pretty extensive conversation about it in the last hearing around issues with catching culprits. I mean, it was a pretty lengthy dialogue on that zero percent number. So it would be surprising if it's now disclosed that that wasn't necessarily the case, because it wasn't the department. I asked about it in the last hearing and the department stood by, stood behind that number.
Yes, sexual assault and rape cases, we do have a clearance rate. I just have to find it. I get, I get a report every week on the sexual assault clearance rate, child abuse, because some of them are classified as child abuse because of the age of the victim. It may still be a sexual assault, but it's considered a child abuse. And we usually have to add those two numbers together. Our sex offense case, unit gives me those numbers every week. I'm going to see if I can find it real quick while we're talking about some other stuff. But if not, I'll definitely get it back to you later today or tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ma, ma, Major War, excuse me, Major, Colonel Worley, I'm sorry about that. Would it be too much for, for us to have in that same column in that, I think it's the, the fourth slide? It's a list of all of the crimes. Would it be too much for us to pull after the year-to-date, last year-to-date, the percentage change, pull an additional column that just has the clearance rate for this year? Is that too much?
No, I mean, we can get that. We have, we have that and, and we can do that, give that back, give that to you on a follow-up. Because we have our clearance rates on all of our, all of our crimes, especially sex offense, because we monitor that, we monitor that one very closely. Simply because, like I said, some of the sex offenses are child abuse depending on the victim. Unfortunately, those, those.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think you, you're talking about going forward on the reports that we give you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I think, I think for that slide in particular, it adds that additional piece of insight. Given that, you know, I think we just had the discussion about the Northeast and Northern, how we're, they're doing a little bit better on clearing, clearing homicides than other parts of the city. And that, that may be part of the factor that's seeing a significant decline in homicides in the last year. I'm not sure if that data is regularly pulled, but if, if it's not too much, I think that would be helpful for, for discussion. I'm, I'm going to hand off. Are you done, Colonel Worley? All right, I'm going to hand off to Councilman Cohen.
Hey, Mr. Chair, thank you to the members of the department. Colonel Jones, you mentioned earlier that some of the spike we've seen is due to folks getting out of prison and engaging in conflict that then escalates to violence. And this is probably a question I'm going to come back to with Muncy, but from the Police Department perspective, what are we doing to stem the tide of that type of violence, right? This is a discreet amount of people. We know who they are. If we're in coordination with parole and supervision, you know, we should have a pretty decent sense. And, and so to hear that, you know, we're continuing to have conflict that escalates into serious violence with the population of returning, folks that are returning from incarceration is, is not good. So just from the Police Department's perspective, what are we doing to address that spike in violence with, with folks coming out of jail and prison?
Well, I think that's a good question, sir. And so I will say just from my own experience and in speaking with the detectives, although everything does not point to it being something related to that individual who was recently beat, who happened to be shot in the same area that he once dealt in, because as I said, it goes back to the corroboration between these individuals. They will say they don't know why, but we think it's because, you know, they did recome, recently come back out and they maybe tried to re-establish old drug trafficking organization. So that's what we surmise. I will say as far as our partnership, working with neighborhood policing plans through our re-entries, getting out, identifying these individuals with parole and probation, getting to these home visits where we're using that carrot and stick to say, hey, look, we know you're out here. We realize that these are the resources and sometimes restrictions that are placed sometimes on re-entering individuals and trying to work through that. We realize that it is a population that has challenges with finances, with challenges with finding jobs, but it's indicative upon us to use our partnership with parole and probation. I will say that Michelle I and Senator McCray, who has a very vast interest in parole and probation and has consistently worked with trying to improve that system. So we are an active participant in trying to understand these re-entering citizens who are sometimes befuddled of how do they make it right? So I will say that majority of them, as put it in a lot of criminology books, is that lion's share of the crime is over beefs, and those beefs, we really don't understand why. But in speaking with those individuals, that we kind of can surmise that it may be over some territorial disputes. We definitely are reaching out as, as best as we can to identify those best practices to get them re-acclimated to society, be it jobs, be it whatever that may be, be it driver's license, be it education. We're trying to figure out those things to collectively working together with the re-entry and systems that have worked in the past of what works best in reference to individuals who are trying to be productive citizens and not go back to those ways of old.
Great. So is it correct to say from your perspective then that if we had more opportunities for jobs, housing, wraparound services, trauma-informed care and all the rest, we would see a significant decline in the violence that this group of folks then perpetuates?
I don't, I not only would limit it to that group of folks, I'd just say society as a whole. I think anything that we can help in public safety to better our stance to get more individuals removed from either being a victim or a suspect, we are a great stakeholder and partner in that. So be it education, be it housing, be it better jobs, be it better opportunities, whatever it is, and trying to find his trauma care in reference to dealing with either diagnosed or undiagnosed issues, behavioral crises. I believe whatever we can do with our stakeholders and partners to either address those issues that are out there or to improve upon issues that we know about, I think it betters the city as a whole altogether.
Thank you, Colonel, and thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, PPD.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. Any other questions from folks on the committee or, or anyone else for that matter? See, I don't see any.
Mr. Chair, Councilman Stokes, I do have a question. If your committee members don't have one at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. I see Councilman Glover has got his hand up, and then I can get to you. Councilman Glover?
All right, thanks, Mr. Chair. So my question is, how many children ages nineteen and under have been victims of homicide this year? And how many have been victims of a shooting? Can you guys kind of give me some information back on that?
Can, I can give you that.
I know here, I know here in the, in the Eastern District, like there's been, I want to say roughly, within the month of September, there's been, let's see, roughly around seven young people in my district that has been victims of a shooting. But no, no deaths were involved. But if you guys can give me like a overall of the city, exactly how many, you know, young people have been victims of homicide or just of a shooting period. Thank you.
I can give you, under, under eighteen, we, we track it by under eighteen. So it's, in homicides, between the ages of ten and seventeen, there have been seven homicide victims and there's been five under the age of ten. Now, those five are usually a child abuse or something like that. It happens with a, with a young child or a baby this year.
I'm sorry. Yeah, in reference to non-fatal shootings, the same thing, seventeen to the age of ten, there were forty-one victims this year. I will say that I was on scene of that quadruple shooting on Biddle Street, and I, I agree, sir, it's, it's something definitely need to address with our partners. I know we work cohesively with, collaboratively with our school police. We immediately identify an individual that is of juvenile age, we reaching out to our partners in school police in reference to those wraparound services from their side of it to see what's maybe going on. So it is definitely a concern of ours, a concern of mine, being a, a father of a seventeen-year-old, a fourteen-year-old, it, it hits home. I would tell you myself that evening around ten o'clock, leaving the house for that crime scene, you know, my daughter was at the, at the dining room table doing homework. My son was in his room, probably doing something he shouldn't have been doing. I don't know. But I would just say that, you know, I left my home with my kids there, you know, and it's concerning to me that, you know, two fourteen-year-old babies, a seventeen-year-old and a twelve-year-old, unfortunately, the brazen victims of, of this brazen type of shooting that took no consideration of their young lives and their possible potential.
Are we, are we also following, following up with like mental health services? Because there's a lot of trauma. I visit several of those family members for those victims that have been shootings. And there's like no social workers that have, have been there. We have a guy in a neighborhood that, I know many of you guys know him as Uncle T, that has been taking his time to even meet with some of these family members, because some of these kids are afraid of sitting on the front porch now. So we have those conversations with those, with those children and their parents. So are there any like follow-up behind that with like social workers or anybody in the mental health field that are making sure that we're providing the services to these people?
So I can, I can't speak for school police, but I know they do reach around in reference to the services on their end. I know for ourselves, recently what we've done in reference to our notice, notes entries of these cases, it is indicative anytime that there is a juvenile or involved, a mandate from us is that we get a guardian or parent's name and we do follow up in reference to the investigation. So that's something that we've definitely been undertaking more recently. And it's been a mandate from our Deputy Commissioner Briscoe that we follow up with Department of Juvenile Services, Child Protective Services to find out if there's anything, any gaps that we may be missing, anything that alerting them of, of the issue that the individual just involved to see if they can, as you said, address the issues that.
So just to follow up behind that, sir. So are you, are you like telling me that, you know, you guys are having like youth stats meetings with the Baltimore City public school administrators and the police?
Am I telling you that we, we're what?
That you guys are having like, like youth staff, like meetings with Baltimore City School System and their, you know, the Police Department in reference to these kids, like especially the kids that are at risk, those that we can see that are on maybe the wrong track and that are going in another direction? Like are you guys like simultaneously like having these conversations amongst each other?
Yeah, so I would say, yeah, I would say that we're constantly in conversation either with Commissioner Hamm or his major Coleman. I know I speak to them almost weekly in reference to any individuals that are identified as being possible, you know, children in need of supervision or children in need of assistance. So we talk to them of ones that are reaching our radar. I will say that through our community youth division, I know my Lieutenant Colonel Brown is working with the mayor's office in reference to youth services and the host of, of projects going forward to ensure that we are a strong and intentional partner in identifying problematic and troubled youths.
Is there a possibility after, you know, we had this meeting today, that you can like send us over here in the committee, excuse me, in the committee, like those programs and, you know, those things with you guys are, you know, taking steps on moving forward with the mayor's office, the Baltimore City Police Department and the school police?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes, any question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this would probably, first of all, I'm gonna thank Commissioner Harrison, Colonel Jones, Colonel Worley and officers for all their hard work in addressing this violence here in Baltimore City. I just want to make a quick statement. I did introduce a resolution about gun court and I think that's important. That's going to be on the state side because we are finding out, I'm sure Commissioner Harrison said, a lot of these guys who get caught with these guns, we have a backlog in the court system. So they still out on the street shooting people, robbing people. So the idea of a gun court is a faster process. We know we got to go through the state. And I have talked to President Ferguson, we're gonna have more conversation, think it's a great idea. My my question is, the rule of sixty is a law enforcement industry best practice, which states sixty percent of the total number sworn officers in a police department should be assigned to uniform patrol functions. I don't know who can answer this, but can you provide us with current to total number of police officers, sergeants and lieutenants who are assigned to uniform patrol function in all nine districts? Given those numbers, what percentage of your overall sworn staff is assigned to uniform patrol functions?
Councilman, that is something we can give you and I don't know that we have those numbers precisely at our fingertips right now. But we can tell you that we we come quite close to that percentage of two-thirds of our two-thirds of our department are close to it are probably in some patrol function. And we've totally minimized how many people are in administrative functions. So we've done that with our civilization and professionalization, though we need more to do, but we could certainly get that to you.
Okay. And just, Mr. Chair, one more, it's more of a committee request, although I'm not on a committee, can you send the committee the district staffing charts submitted to the chief of patrols offers from all nine districts that you have collected for the month of September? And I know back then before Mayor Scott became the mayor, he talked about the redistricting of the police districts. And by law, the police department is getting ready to begin the process of redistricting its patrol districts. Can you walk us through your plans on how the process will be conducted?
Yes, sir. My my, I think my chief of staff is probably best suited to answer that about redistricting.
Okay, Mr. Chair, that's I can that be two requests? I'm not speaking for the committee, but for this committee to get those, I didn't expect them to have it, but I think there's some good information that not just the committee, but the council should have in front of them.
Those are noted. So the staffing charts broken down by by district? And how we're how the department is thinking about redistricting, giving
Patrol district, yes, sir.
Production patrol districts. Yes, got it.
One more question. I know that the mayor got this violence prevention program is started in Western District.
Councilman Stokes, are you are you still going to be on? We we want to make sure we get through the rest of their presentation.
Okay, all right. Then I'll get to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna move on. Has everyone had an opportunity on the committee to to ask their questions? We're gonna move on and and get to the the next part of the BPD's presentation. And I asked that you guys please be be brief. I know we burned through a lot of time just now. All right, I'll hand off.
Yeah, I have your questions, but I'll I'll hold off. Let's chair to the next opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, can can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, excellent. And I and I will try to be brief. I appreciate it. And thank you for the time this afternoon. The first, and obviously we're talking about overtime and then staffing very briefly. And there are a couple of visualizations and a couple of charts that you all will see here like usual that outline where we have been and where we are today. And just looking at this overtime expenditures comparison for the last couple of years, you can see the different lines on the line chart to see how we have as an agency have been spending overtime. Obviously, the yellow line is the current fiscal year, which we are in right now. And just kind of the high-level overall highlights is that in the last two and a half years, we've reduced overtime spending by over thirty percent globally for the entire thing. And you can see of the giant orange spike from a couple of years ago. That has been brought down and consistently stayed down since then by some of the effective controls that we've put into place. Now we have Workday. Workday has both been a a very helpful tool, but also a challenge at times just because of, you know, people need to get used to using it like any new type of technology. But that is the overall story there. You can see that on the yellow line, it is starting to creep up a little bit. And if you look at a calendar of, quite frankly, nationally, along with that in terms of public forward-facing events, special events, different community-type gatherings, a lot of that will match the the creeping up of the overtime spending in the last couple of pay periods this fiscal year. Essentially, as COVID has become something that is we we as a country have become more adept at living with, and there are a lot more things happening and things opening up, we have an obligation, obviously, to staff a lot of those things. And so there have been some pretty significantly large deployments of police officers. That is, we spend overtime on doing that. Going to the next slide, it's exactly the same lines that you'll see on it. And that matches, these are the hours, the amount of time spent on overtime matches the dollars from the last slide, which is why the lines are exactly the same. But it's the same story to be told there. And that is it for the overtime section at a very high level. And very briefly, moving on to staffing and recruitment, you can see a snapshot as of last week for our budgeted strength, both sworn and civilian, where we are in terms of vacancies and actually having positions filled that exist. And then the next slide is a snapshot of applications year-to-date and then, and you can see on the far left is the total applications received. Important thing to garner from that, the orange bar is last year's applications. And then the gray bar is this year's application. You'll see, and thank you Director Wersberger for doing the highlighting there with the the pointer. It's slightly less than last year and we we were concerned that, you know, are we doing something wrong where we are causing the applications to drop? So we reached out to as many of the other big city police departments with similar-sized police forces and similar populations that serve in their cities as us through the Major Cities Chiefs Association and the Police Executive Research Forum to do a survey on whether or not they're seeing similar trends. They are in fact seeing similar trends across the country. There's been a twenty-two, I want to say, I don't have it in front of me, I can pull up a twenty to fifty percent dip in applications nationally, largely driven by the events of last year and then, of course, the pandemic as well. The next slide is cadet applications, similar trend line there. Obviously, on the left side is the volume raw number, a lot less people applying it specifically to be cadets than police officers. That has a lot to do with people's age and all of that stuff. Next page is a little bit difficult to understand, but it's a snapshot of the third quarter of this year compared to the third quarter of the last two years. And so it's not cumulative for the entire year. That is something that I I think is, so it's essentially breaking out just the three months of the third quarter, July through September. As you see, the takeaway from this slide from a high-level standpoint is that hiring right now for the police department is essentially matching where we were last year. And if you recall, last year was a banner year, even though with attrition, it was slightly, very slightly higher than what we've lost. It was still the best hiring year in twelve years for the police department. Hiring this year, like I said, is essentially matching last year's with the exception of the first the first quarter of this year, which is not captured on this slide, unfortunately. The first quarter, if you recall, from the last couple of quarterly public safety hearings we have talked about, there was a dip in the hiring largely due to ramifications from COVID. And I can, I can get into the weeds on that, but the general flavor of it is that COVID caused a bunch of issues with regard to hiring. But outside of those first three months, the pace for hiring per month has been above or the same as the same months for last year, if that is making sense to what I'm saying. And so that is a positive. And what that tells us is that consistently for the last couple of years, the hiring machine, if you will, that has been developed and created here at the police department is consistently delivering. And that is really important because if you look at data going back before we really focused on rebuilding the recruitment section, it's sort of all over the place. And the idea is to have a standardized process that will live in perpetuity to deliver what we know will always be the outcome, barring any unforeseen circumstances, which is certainly what we saw a little bit earlier this year. The next slide is just a visualization of some of the hiring demographic breakdowns for the last couple of years. And it's been about the same. And what's important takeaway from this is that we have really made a concerted effort to boost local hiring and boost minority hiring and boost female hiring. And while we are starting to see a lot of that reflected in the applications that we're that we're getting, we are still not seeing it as much as we would want to, but we are a little bit in the actual hires that are happening. That's important for us as an agency and the leadership of the agency. It's important for a lot of people I know that that you all, it's something that you have focused on as well. It is really important that our our police department really does reflect the communities that we serve. And that is important to the overall picture of everything of rebuilding trust and then obviously having a robust public safety effort and making the city safer. And that is where it sort of starts and that we share that. And that is why we have focused on that. And that is where the marketing campaign has spent a lot of energy and frankly, dollars on focusing. And something that we may not have described much with regard to the marketing campaign is that it is about content that is put out there, but it's also how we do target audiences out there. And so there is a layer to that in terms of geo-fencing and usually using digital marketing to to expand the applicant pool. And then the last slide is just the overall hiring and attrition comparison between 2019 and 2020. The big numbers on the right in the red are what people focus on often. And that those are the differences between hiring and attrition. I think it's really important to provide a little bit of context for everybody because that there are two things I want to say. The first thing I want to say is that what the data has bared out and what you're seeing here in a in a very general sense is again, what I said before, hiring is good, but it is attrition and retention that we are really focusing on because if you look at the data, the drop-offs have to do with retention, not necessarily with with a lack of hiring. And the context, the contextual part that I wanted to provide here very briefly is that that number negative sixty-eight, that's based on one ninety-seven minus one twenty-nine. I'm looking at the bottom row right there. That's where we go with that number. It's actually slightly smaller than that right now because we've hired some more people since these numbers were published here. And the important story and context to be told here is that of that sixty-eight in the bottom right corner, thirty-one of those people of the sixty-eight were separated from the agency because of of medical issues, meaning that they were either in a permanently disabled capacity and couldn't serve as a police officer anymore. Or it was a forced job removal per the contractual obligations between the city and the FOP that exists in terms of how long it stay in a medical status. So there's thirty-one there. There are twenty-eight or so, almost thirty, it might actually be thirty people who have been either terminated or have resigned in lieu of termination or retirement because of disciplinary reasons. And then there are twenty people this year so far who have essentially washed out of the police academy. And if you add all three numbers up right there, that comes out to be seventy-nine. And so seventy-nine people out of the one ninety-seven this year, we as an agency have made a deliberate decision to separate them from the agency. And that is because they are not able to perform the duties of an officer anymore. And so that is, the seventy-nine compared to the sixty-eight essentially wipes out the delta that exists there. And that's really important to show that because of the intentional separations, as we try to change the culture of the agency, the hiring is quite frankly, outpacing their attrition in that sense. That is not meant as an excuse or anything. It's just an explanation. The context is important because the narrative is something different that we often hear out there. And it is important to hear those data points because that is important to the narrative. We absolutely need to do more hiring and always are looking for your help and anybody else's and how can we do a better job? I believe that is the last slide on the the brief presentation for the the fiscal snapshot and the staffing snapshot.
Excellent. Thank you. If you don't mind taking down the presentation. Thank you. The the first question that I want to ask is regarding the staffing plan. So there are in the staffing plan, there were five categories that that BPD was looking to reduce call volume in. Can you explain how we plan to reduce the number of disorderly person calls? I think it was about twenty, twenty-five percent, which is what was stated in the plan. How how do we plan to do that?
Actually, so Eric Maloson, Chief of Staff, I helped administer the staffing plan. We are looking to partner with the mayor's office on that, actually. We are looking at ways for diversion strategies for a non-police response to be able to potentially handle as the first line of response, what some of those disorderly calls would be. What we're trying to do with the staffing plan is a long-term, five-year outlook, what it would be if the department was able to leverage all of its assets the right way, fully staffed and then have outside partnerships like the one I'm describing. And so part of that is still something which we're trying to define the the right goals. But what we do know is that a significant portion of all calls for service are tied up in that disorderly person category. They represent over ten percent of all calls for service for the entire agency. That's a big, big challenge for us to look at, but part of it is making certain that we've got the right protocols, that we're responding with the right level of service as a city, not just as a police department, and making sure that we're able to not only make sure that those incidents are handled safely, but with the right resources. And so it represents that comprehensive approach. I don't want to speak necessarily for Monty. I know Director Jackson's on this call, but it's one of the things we're looking at together as part of a long-term strategy to address how we respond. And that's where the reduction would really come from is it's less, not that the incidents are occurring, but that it would not require a necessitated police response, if that makes sense.
Sure. No, that makes sense. And I had a couple of meetings at the mayor's office actually just this morning about exactly that that conversation. And and tied to that, tied to that question, one of the other plans was to divert traffic management to a third-party vendor. What are are we looking at certain vendors? Who are we looking at? And then as far as for this plan, are there any other cities that have done this and done this well? What are some of the best practices and and what do we see in there for that we want to take into account for our approach?
Well, let's answer the second question first. There are other cities that have done this and done it well. We actually did it in New Orleans right before we took the opportunity to come to Baltimore. So there is a model that that can be looked at and a vendor provides it there. That's why it was it was important to like put that in our crime plan. And it was hard going forward. I'll let Eric continue with it.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, so part of what we're looking at is a pilot version of the program, potentially for a one-year that would engage in that vendor at no cost to the city. Part of their model and their business model is to be able to collect information from these accidents and be able to sell that information to insurance companies that are interested in the lost run of their of their covered customers. Part of what we would look at going beyond that would be more of an RFP, RFI, done in coordination with city procurement to ensure that, you know, solicitation of vendors is done in an open and competitive fashion with price structures that might vary, but ultimately something for consideration. Now, the model exists, it's designed to go for non-injury, non-DWI-related incidents, essentially fender dinners, which according to our data constitutes well over fifteen thousand incidents a year in the city of Baltimore, which part of our projection is just to reduce that as the as the plan suggests by a certain percentage, not necessarily wiping them all out. But again, it's part of our long-term goal to utilize our resources to the to the best possible fashion and to provide a service still to the city at the same time.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Ramos. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had some questions on the hiring slides. The last couple of times that you presented before us, you also had The last couple of times that you presented before us, you also had the race and gender breakdown of those who are leaving the department. Can we get that?
Absolutely. Anything that we don't have here, we will be sure to get to you for sure. And that is, that's important obviously to us because from our retention standpoint, something that we are trying to do is keep quality people working here. And we need to figure out the reason why people are leaving. We do do exit interviews. Right now, the exit interviews are voluntary and we are moving towards make, figuring out ways to have more participation in the exit interviews so that we can get more data. It's also important to point out that we also just procured and started using earlier this year, technology. It's a software called Pecan and we might have presented on it before. I can't remember. But Pecan is an employee satisfaction survey software. And so it essentially allows us to get the same type of information that I'm describing about the reasons why people are doing things or how they feel about certain things, but in real time. And so we are able to hopefully keep people from leaving before they leave. And we're relying on exit interview once they're already out the door. And so yes, absolutely. That data is really, really important for those reasons. So thank you for asking me about it.
Yeah, I appreciate that because I'm, I'm very curious about the, the breakdown. And you had said that there are people that your, that the department is working on its house cleaning as well. And so I do appreciate that as well. That's it for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Burnett. You have a question?
I do. Does the department track the, sorry, I'm trying to come to notes here. Does the department detract, track decline cases that are declined for prosecution or no, no process cases?
Yes, we do. We've been doing that for some time. And as a matter of fact, we just did an audit of cases that were released without, released on their own recognizance. Cases that are gun crimes that are released on their own recognizance. So we, we track that. We have members of our team that track it and we've been working with the state's attorney. There's actually, you may have heard me talk about this. We are in an MOU with the state's attorney and the mayor's office for an analyst to be hired at the state's attorney to break down that aggregate data and give that to us. Because those are one of the things that we needed to know early on to determine if we were making mistakes that we could self-correct. But without knowing that, it's almost impossible to self-correct. So that was something we needed to know as an agency specifically about the violent crimes, murders, shootings, armed robberies and gun crimes.
And are you able to provide the committee with the breakdown of those, the types of cases, gun cases, sexual assaults, felony cases?
I have to look. I think the MOU is specific about that information being among criminal justice practitioners. I don't have to look and see what's in the MOU if we're allowed to release that publicly. And I, I will absolutely take a look at that. But we do track that.
Okay, thank you. And I, I have more questions, Mr. Chair, but you can, I'll, I'll wait for my next, next round.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Councilman Cohen?
No questions for this round. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Glover.
No questions for this round.
Excellent. Porter or Costello?
No questions for this round, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Sorry about that. I was drinking water.
Caught you off guard, my bad. Okay, we can move on to the final, the final part of the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll wait for the slides to come up. I've got a short presentation on our consent decree process and then I'll kick it over to Deputy NATO to talk about our misconduct and PIB. So we're continually, let's go back to the first slide there, Michelle. At the reform process, I always like to remind people what it is. It's, it's that policy, it's that training and finally implementation. We've been working very hard over the last few years, particularly in that policy area and the training area. And over the last year, we've moved rapidly into more implementation. That, that includes audits, compliance reviews, outcome assessments. And, and it ultimately shows that we're actually performing the way we should in this, in this reform process. You can go on the next slide. Now, our policy work continues. And for example, we have policies out for public comment right now, which include extreme risk protection orders, certain seizure warrants, and I encourage the public and anybody watching to, to take a look at those and provide feedback to us. It's important that we get feedback from the public. A lot of work has continued to be done in training. We will have all our officers trained in community policing by next month. We have begun our crisis intervention team or CIT certification training and have had two classes thus far and will continue to do that. And then we just begun our third fair and impartial policing module as, and it's currently in progress. Now, if you go to the next slide. Now, here's a snapshot of our progress and, and this is an oversimplification of a very, very complex progress, process. But you can see more green than blue, you know, but this is a way to show how we've gone through that policy and that collaboration with the parties to put together policy and then training and then actually train our folks and then move into that implementation status. So we continue to move towards that implementation status. And, and ideally, when we get to the end of this process, you would see the entire document being green. That being said, an oversimplification of 511 paragraphs, which we are committed to holding ourselves to that standard. Can you go to the next slide? And these are just our latest reports that are out and I just want to highlight where they're available. You see the website there at the bottom, but there's a 2020 report on misconduct investigation. The assessment of First Amendment protected activities was just released. And then quarterly, we release, are released without charges audits that are all available online for any member of the public or any member of the council to take a look at. And I'll kick it over to Deputy NATO for his part of this presentation.
Thank you, Deputy Sullivan. Goodie, good afternoon. My name is Brian Nate. I'm the deputy over at Public Integrity Bureau. So the first slide is sort of a, an overview of all of the numbers for our bureau. I, I will now go through them one by one, but I would want, do want to highlight a few that I think are important. If you can go to the next slide. Thank you. This is year-to-date complaints received. I think it's important to note that in 2018, we had over 1,800 complaints that had come in, a total of over 1,800. In 2019, that started to decrease. And I think you'll see with the new training policies, commanders in this organization, we've managed to bring that down in 2020. And then although we do see a slight uptick in 2021, a lot of that has contributed to some of our own processes that we've done internally, which is really through our audits and inspections, which we're looking for other violations that are taking place to make sure that we can correct those. So I think this is a good message to look to see that the complaints are coming down. But where there is an uptake, it's our own doing, doing a self-inspection of ourselves, which I think is a good thing for us to do. If we go to the next slide. The next slide shows year-to-date completed investigations. One of those, you'll notice along the way in 2018, we had an uptick in 2019, uptick in 2020 of completed cases. It does show on this slide a decrease in 2021, year-to-date of completed cases. A lot of that is attributed to, we've taken on an additional 17 detectives. They've gone through training, they're getting up to speed. And also we had a technology glitch on our closures, so we need to get that corrected. So I'm not as concerned about the, what it shows on the slide as a decrease. I think overall, once we get it corrected and fixed, it'll, it'll show an increase. In addition, we're hiring a research analyst to come to the agency to sort of look through the process and assist us with finding areas that we can look at, areas we should be focusing on, where our complaints are, who our problem officers are, as Councilman Remo said, cleaning up our house, which is what we're trying to do. So I think I will see that. In addition, in 2021, we had all our detectives trained with a 40-hour training program. So we're really looking for the quality, a higher quality investigation, which we'll be doing a review with DOJ and the monitoring team on shortly, looking for more thorough investigations and cer- and certainly a better quality investigation. We go to the next slide. The next slide shows CRB, CRB allegations. As you'll notice, from 2019, we had a sharp decrease in 2020 and an even sharper increase or in some areas in 2021. Again, I attribute this to the training, the change in leadership, moving forward in the right direction, cleaning up our house, getting rid of some of the problem folks that we've had. I think you heard Deputy Gillis say that we had 28 to 30 people that we've terminated this year. There was 18 last year. These are people that brought us numerous complaints along the way. And so we're starting to clean that process up, which I think is very helpful. If we go to the next slide and then one more, you can bypass that one, go to the next one. So this is our expedited resolution process that we instituted. This is to take more minor offenses like fear to appear in court, loss of property, fear to appear for medical appointment and fear to complete training. We've instituted this back in 2020. This is where we are to date on it. It has really assisted us in flagging up about 145 cases that we could put back through the command, people that were going to accept the responsibility for what they did. They can take their punishment, move on. As you see, all but 12 accepted responsibility. And out of the 12, the reason they didn't accept responsibility is they actually had a reason why they either missed the appointment, et cetera, for which those came here, investigated and were adjudicated. So I think this process has really shown how much it's assisted us in closing out some of these cases, better use of our resources, certainly better use of members' time. The next one, again, sort of shows sort of the, the same thing. Along the way, the ones that were routed through, so we can move on to the next slide. I, I think on this last slide, you're going to see through this process from 19 to 20, when we started the expedited resolution process and now 2021, the blue is all the cases that have come back sustained from that process. As you can see, it's a, it's a greater number as we're moving forward. So I think the process is working. We're picking out the right cases that should be set through this process, making sure that the members are getting the penalty they deserve, but learning from it, which is the, the issue, right? To learn from their mistakes and move forward in the organization, not tying it up with things hanging over their head for a lengthy period of time. So we are working on that. I think this shows that that process is at least working as we move forward. And when we move on to the questions section, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. And I, I'm glad to see the nuance in the data. I think, I think it's important for us to realize that while we need to have the conversations about crime and our response to crime, we also need to make sure that we continue to have the conversation about our department and how well we run our department, making sure that we hold ourselves accountable. And I'm glad to see that although we're seeing a decline in, in complaints, we're seeing internal complaints go up and suggesting that we're, we're trying more now than ever to hold ourselves accountable. So really happy to see those changes. I think it reflects well upon us and hopefully it makes us run better as an organization. I, I wanted to ask a question going back, not, not necessarily about, about internal investigations. I want to ask a question about homicides again, going back to some of our crime metrics. So one of the questions I had was how many, how many women have been homicide victims this year? And how many have been victims of shootings? Do we have that, that information by chance?
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, it's kind of general. So reference to non-fatal shootings, currently there were 62 females out of 513.
And homicides, 32.
Excellent. Thank you. And then what percentage of these cases are related to domestic violence?
I'd have to get back to you with that one because we don't have that. We don't track that. It's not here on the main sheet.
I agree, Rich. Yeah, my, my sheet also, I think we have the same sheet except for identical, except for homicide and shootings. And I'm not tracking where they're, that, that's it, sir.
The domestic violence breakdown. I think that would be really, really helpful. Are we, are we holding DV stat hearings yet? I know that was a question that we had from a, one of our previous hearings about domestic violence in the city. Have we begun holding hearings? And if not, why not?
We, we have not had DV stat. We have CID stat where we go over information. They go through a rotation with all the CID units with family crimes and sex offense and homicide. They go through a rotation, but that's an internal thing with just our criminal investigation division.
Sure. Okay. I, I, I'd really, really be interested to see how much, given we, we know that some of the beefs that we've seen, some of the violence that we're seeing, and I'm not sure quite how much that is because we don't have those percentages today, how much that could be potentially addressed and diverted by that stat program that, that we, we used to hold. With that, I'll turn it over back to folks in the committee. Any additional questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair, if I could, for a moment, just to answer your question about DV stat?
Yes. Thank you, Director Jackson.
Absolutely. So while DV stat has not started yet, Monsey is happy to share with the council that we just received a $750,000 grant from OVW. We just took receipt of notification of that a couple of days ago. That is something that we shared with you all the last time we testified. Given that grant, we will be able to walk through our domestic violence fatality review in ways that will inform DV stat in partnership with BPD, Mercy Medical Center, and also in partnership with the House of Roof. So more to come on that.
That, that's great to hear.
I have, I have one question and related to the DV cases there. Now, we have, are you talking about directly where it's the husband, wife? Because we have many that are the boyfriend of the current girlfriend. You know how that works? Or they, they shoot each other, they kill each other. It's not strictly domestic, but it's domestic related.
You know what? That's a great question. I'm not sure if that's parsed out in the data. But I, I do think it is helpful to understand where, where some of the violence that we're seeing perpetrated in the city is connected to romantic relationships.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we can circle back on that. I'd love to get some additional feedback on if this is something that folks are thinking about to adequately address the, the balance that we're seeing in, in domestic relationships and violence against women. To that end, I want to open up the floor of questions from the committee. I'll, I'll go back in that circle that we did once before. Councilwoman Ramos, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have one question related to the slides we just saw and then one going back. I'm looking at slide 30. Again, thank you to Michelle for sending the slides out ahead of time so I can see with my old eyes. The under 2021 misconduct stats, 2019 had pretty high for harassment. Are these, these are both internal and external? So for instance, is it that these are misconduct because a citizen complained about an officer? Or is it also internal, like a, someone internally complained about the officer?
So on the 2000, on the slide that Michelle has up right now, you're talking about the, I'm assuming you're talking about the purple line, which shows a high number. So those are allegations that we have deemed the complaint, whether or not it's internal or external. That's an allegation that we have deemed a possible allegation. For instance, there's a call that comes in, let's say a sergeant writes somebody up for a violation. We look at it. We also see that there might be an harassment charge. So each call, each complaint that comes through may have more than one allegation attached to it, whether or not it comes internally or externally. So these are allegations that my department has tagged the complaint with. So it could be internal or external.
Okay, that's helpful. I think one thing I'd like to, as soon as I see the stats on who's leaving and the fact that we've only been able to recruit only five women to work at the police department this last quarter, I'm curious about, you know, if these harassment, I mean, I see that it's gone down over time, which is good. And I know that can be a lot of different types of harassment, but it would be interesting to see what some of the internal complaints might be as well. I know, and I know the reports for internal are going out just because you're doing your own internal complaints. But it would be interesting to me to see, you know, what the complaints are that are coming from citizens and then the work that you're doing internally, or complaints coming from other colleagues.
Right. I could just tell you from my view of these cases that probably ninety, ninety, ninety-five percent of these are external, come from the outside.
And then even though we're seeing an increase in two thousand twenty-one, which you said was because of the internal work that you're doing, you still think that ninety-five percent are external?
So we're seeing an increase in overall internal complaints. But the, if you look at the purple graph here, the harassment is still lower. It's slower than two thousand twenty. What you're seeing is in the green and the false, the false arrest ones, these are, of course, these are CRB eligible complaints. If you go, if Michelle, if you can go back a slide, this is the overall complaints. These are complaints, these are allegations. So these are complaints. And so if you look at both the blue and the red, and I'm using my pointer, but my pointer's not working. It's on Michelle's. But if you see the overall right there where she's pointing, the blue and the red are even. Those are both higher than two thousand twenty. And the reason they're higher is the red is higher because of our internal audits, which is, you know, a good thing, right? We're looking internally to find issues and whether or not, just because we see it on an audit doesn't make it a violation. It just means it's a potential violation. So we look at it to make sure that it either is or it isn't. And then the blue ones, which are external, I'm assuming the red ones, which are external, are coming most likely because we're having more interaction with the public now that COVID sort of released itself, but not totally. So we have a little bit of maybe an upswing in that aspect of it. And I also think that because we're out promoting to the public, if they have complaints, to come and report them, right? We want to be transparent. We want to look at our problems. We want to fix them. And so we sort of encourage and make it easier for the public to come and file a complaint, either online, come in person, et cetera. And so there's been a little bit of an upswing in those folks as well, which is a good thing. But if you go back to two thousand eighteen, and then you'll see two thousand nineteen has started dropping. I mean, we are on a far lower track than we were back then, which, you know, honestly, it's got to be from, you know, the training and then these people. Thirty people this year, like nineteen last year, you know, that's almost fifty people who not only might have had one complaint, might have had multitude. We've let people leave this agency that, you know, we have eleven, fourteen cases on. So it's a progress along the way, and I think we're going to see it continue certainly into twenty-two, twenty-three and beyond. So it's a good thing for us. We are doing exactly what you said, cleaning up the housework.
And then it is easier now to make complaints. I mean, it's not just calling up the sergeant. It's, there's a process and everything. So the fact that they're going down, even how it's much, it should be anyway, I would imagine, then, you know, it makes a difference. Mr. Chair, I have an unrelated question going, actually, it's not on any of the slides. I'm curious about the work that has been done on the nine-one-one diversion. How many of those nine-one-one calls have been diverted? Again, that was because the program was if somebody was having suicidal ideation, it would be diverted to mental health. I would still argue that we need to really address some larger mental health issues that we're having and not just suicidal ideation. So can I, what's the, what's the status of that?
I will say this, I'm not sure if anyone is prepared to answer that question right now. I'll say, Councilman Ramos, I did have a meeting with the mayor's office just this morning about exactly that conversation. The program's been active for about three months. We're looking to bring them back to the committee to discuss the findings from the program at the six-month mark. So we'll get some information, some more details, and some more substantive conversation around how it's working so that we can understand what it takes to expand that program and also some of the troubles that we've seen thus far. I'm not sure if anyone can answer the question that was asked, how many have been diverted? But that just gives you a little background on.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thanks. And I'll save my questions for the next round. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm not sure who's best to respond, but between two thousand twelve and two thousand twenty-one, the department eliminated twenty-three patrol posts and reduced officers deployed to patrol city streets by eighteen on day shift, day and evening shift thirty-three, and thirty-three officers on midnight. Would impact the, and maybe this is for the commissioner, impact, do you believe this reduction has had on capacity to deter and respond to crime in Baltimore?
Did I hear you correctly? What was the starting year you talked about, Councilman?
Between two thousand twelve and two thousand twenty-one.
Well, I think we can speak to when we came, when we came in, we created the microzone and we talked about the posts. I think we can talk about how we're dealing with post assignments, microzone assignments, and some level of deterrence, some level of displacement that we're seeing in those areas and in those problematic posts. Going back to two thousand twelve, then there may be somebody on the team who could speak to the reduction in the posts and how that has led to where we are now. I don't know that I can speak to that at this moment, but I can get that back to you, unless there's somebody else that can address it right now.
Colonel Jones or Colonel Worley?
I misjudged the question. Are you talking about how the posts were reduced?
Yeah, reduction in the post and essentially the impact it's had on capacity to address crime.
I'm not so much it had a, I mean, obviously, we took more officers off the street, but what we did is when we redid the districting, prior to that, what we had was we didn't have posts. We actually, for a time, we didn't have posts. We just had sectors. And that was a while ago, and that didn't work at all. And then we went to the sectors, and then we started eliminating some of the sectors. Like, for example, in the Northeast, we actually never lost posts. We gained one because Frankfurt went from having one post officer to having two post officers. So what they did is they allowed the commanders to have an input into what they, what they wanted to have done in their district. And when I was in the Northeast, I just kept, I wanted to have Frankfurt divided. So what it did, it wasn't so much that, it was more like making each district more proficient because some districts had, for example, the Eastern had a post that considered Orangeville, that really nothing happened there. So that post officer was kind of a wasted officer. He could have been moved somewhere else. So I think that was one of the posts that they totally eliminated because the posts were so old, the demographics of the city had changed. So they got rid of some of the posts that were no longer busy, that weren't busy, that were being used for something else, and it allowed us to staff patrol a little more efficiently. I don't know so much it had a negative impact on crime because those officers were still used somewhere else in patrol. They weren't moved anywhere else.
Well, Councilman, I think I'll add to that. While I might, you know, while that happened in two thousand twelve, what I can say is the entire post concept, as we found it, as it remains, is really based on geography and the equal distribution of officers across a geography and dividing certain districts up into specific geographies. And it is, it is about equal staffing for the geography, but crime is not equal in all posts. And so it's not necessarily a crime fighting deployment strategy. It's more of a crime, it's more of an officer deployment strategy for the fair dispersion of officers across a district, more so than directing officers toward where crime actually is, which is where we created the microzone.
So I guess as a quick follow-up to that, one of the things that I've seen as a result that there are parts of, I'll speak to the Southwest, for example, where, you know, there's obviously an emphasis on area where, you know, there is violent crime, you know, and I, you know, I absolutely understand that. But what we end up seeing is that there is an inability to cover areas that may have previously been areas where, you know, a hotspot for, you know, trafficking and elsewhere, where it becomes more difficult to proactively patrol those areas to, I guess, you know, prevent, you know, those areas from being retaken. And we've seen that in particular at the top part of the Southwest District, where there's traditionally not a lot of gun violence. I think there was one shooting this year and that, and that, I don't know what posts that would be considered, but in the northern part of the Southwest, we, you know, we saw, it's traditionally quiet there, but now there is, you know, an increase in activity there that, from my perspective at least, the department is sort of trying to figure out how to, you know, both maintain the patrols that do legitimately have the most violence while also trying to figure out, well, how do they remain proactive? So other parts of the district aren't left behind. And, you know, I know it's not really a question more of an anecdote, but just throwing it out there that that's something that we're seeing in that part of the district.
Yeah, that, yeah, that may not be a question, but I think speaking to it, we, that is something we deal with every day and even multiple times a day, the historical areas that historically have repeated crime or violent crime and our spending the right amount of time in that area, but not forsaking the other areas that officers are assigned to so that we don't displace it to an area that doesn't see it. So that's a, that's a daily challenge that we deal with, but it's a guide that we have to follow. It's about making sure we're in areas where we know crime is and always has been, but not pushing it to areas where it hasn't always been. And when that happened, creating the adjustment to deal with it and prevent it there also. It's something that you've heard the Colonel talk about. They talk about dealing on the crime calls with the commanders because the adjustment has to happen almost every day sometimes.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Mr. Chair, I did have a couple of questions for Monzi. Are we gonna, is there a formal presentation later for Mayor's Office, the neighborhood safety, or should I just hold those for the next round?
Yep, Monzi's going to be presenting next.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cohen, any questions?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick moment of props to, BPD just released a internal investigation on the protests of two thousand twenty and did well, and I think it was pretty well deserved. And Commissioner, I think that's to your leadership as well as officers who were professional and restrained. So I wanted to start there on a positive note. On a less positive note, still hearing quite a bit of chatter from officers about how the consent decree either handcuffs them or limits their ability to do effective policing work, which I know is a message that you've attempted to dispel, and that I think all of us have attempted to dispel. I'm curious what the department is doing to really prove to officers that the consent decree is, you know, really a way to improve the organization and not, you know, limit policing, but make policing constitutional. Because I will say that a lot of that rhetoric then gets out into the public and, you know, the result is not good. So that's my question, is what are we doing around making sure that officers are not putting out bad information about what the consent decree does or intends to do?
That's a good question. Believe it or not, Judge Bredor asks us that same question every month. We met with him last week, and he has the same concern. It is about the communication strategy, internal communication and just like external communication to the community. I've been going to two road calls a week, and I'm going to continue doing that to get in front of the officers firsthand. The law has not changed. The Constitution has not changed. We can do everything that the law has always allowed police officers to do. We did have to change some of our protocols and tactics because what, much of what we was doing was unconstitutional. So it becomes a serious internal communication strategy because when officers say that, that's code language for, I can't do what I used to do. You know, I can't move people off cars. I can't be heavy-handed. I can't grab them. And I can't arrest them when they just don't obey my commands. That's code for that. So we have to always do, you know, I, all of us, especially me, have to do a better job in getting in front of the officers to deliver the message. You can do what the law allows, what the law has always allowed, just the right way. But we have to unlearn, and this is part of the training at the academy, we have to unlearn bad behaviors, then reteach and relearn the appropriate patterns and behaviors and practices and protocols. And so it is while education and communication, both from the leadership of the police department and, but all the way down to the supervisors on the ground, making sure that the messaging is correct. Now, I don't know that we'll ever stop a hundred percent of the people from saying what they want to say, but certainly we can make sure that in the presence of informed supervisors and commanders, we're putting the right message out to the officers. And hopefully, you know, what I see many officers get it, and a lot of our newer officers get it, it's a few of our officers who are just resistant to change and resistance, resistant to something being different that doesn't allow them to do what they want to do or what they used to be able to do. That's what we're up against. And so as much hope as we can get with communicating through community meetings in person, virtually, internal meetings within our agency on a regular basis, talking about the mission and vision of the agency and what the consent decree really is and what it is really not. I'm glad you brought that up because we have, we answer that same question every month in front of the judge.
Critically important. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Councilman Cohen, Councilman Glover, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is, maybe, I don't know, the Commissioner, maybe you can help me out with this. Is, I think it's kind of piggybacking off of what Councilman Cohen was just talking about, how like here in the, I wanted specifically to talk about the Eastern District, how it seems like there's like a disconnect between the, the community and the police department over here and our part of the district because of the fact that what we're saying over and over again is that we see the drug dealing. And we also know that, you know, credit to a lot of the great officers that are out there, they are making a lot of drug arrests. And I've seen that on like on records. But there's still a point where there's an enormous amount of individuals that are standing on a particular corner, like a liquor store or maybe a convenience store. And at times, me personally, you know, I frequent my district like all types of night. And sometimes I'll park the vehicle and just stare. And right across, there is a police officer that may be posted on that corner. And I personally see some of the drug dealing that be going on in the corner. I get calls all the time to my office in reference to how do we get the officers? And don't get me wrong, again, there are some great officers that are doing some great work here. But I think what I see is that they're being undermined by some of the new officers that are coming on that are probably not giving maybe some of the training that you guys are putting forth. Because what I'm seeing is, you know, the sit in the police cars, the playing the video games. Because at times I'll walk over, I won't, you know, say to the officer that I'm the councilman of the district, but just to engage in the conversation, just to find out exactly what can we do to help you guys out from a community perspective. And a lot of times what I hear is that, bro, you know what, our hands are handcuffed, man. And, you know, the, you know, your state's attorney got this policy out and things of that nature. And I'm like, you know, the policy came out to every councilperson that went out to the police department in reference to what the state's attorney had put out. And what I see is that I'm educating the community as much as I can from a council perspective. And I know some of the NCO officers are also educating the community. Some of the NCO officers are also educating the community, those that come into the community association meetings. But those that don't attend the meetings due to the fact that maybe they're not getting off work in time to attend those meetings. What they're saying is that, and when they make conversations with officers, that there's not, it's not the water boy selling waters on that corner. There's not like the guys squeaking in cars when they pull up. You can clearly see there's some drug dealer that be going on.
Councilman Glover, can you answer the question?
What's that?
Okay, can you ask your question?
Yeah, that's it. What what are we doing about uh the officers that are not like taking on the drug dealing that I clearly see? That's going on in this district.
Thank you for that. Let me, let me just tell you, that's not the only area of the city. I hear that. I hear that complaint in all nine districts. We, we spend a lot of time working to get our officers to be more engaged. Number one. The, the, the biggest complaint that I hear and that I've always heard is officers sitting in the car. So we, we spend a lot of time pushing supervisors and now holding supervisors accountable. But when we find that, that they're not checking on that to correct that, that's the problem. Number two, when it comes to the drug dealing, we all see it. It's a, it's a common complaint everywhere in the city from all nine districts. And the, the challenge is to get the officers to be more engaged. We are making drug arrests. That's number one. And we are arresting people for distribution when we can make those kinds of cases. But the officers are uh because of the state's attorney is not prosecuting simple possession cases, the officers are. When they're not making the distribution cases are likely not to make an arrest of a person who might just be buying one. One of what are on on a simple possession case. And what we want is for an officer to actually be able to engage, especially if it's a group of more than one person. To be able to engage that group if they have to investigate and make an arrest and do it safely. If there are, let's just say hypothetically, four or five people in the corner and more officer. The, 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 the likelihood of the officer arresting the dealer successfully without. Uh, a chase or whatever. I, I don't know that that's safe. What we need is for more than one officer to join that officer, to engage them. And to, to engage them to stop that. That's unwanted behavior. Nobody wants in the neighborhood and we want our officers, especially, especially me. Because I did that for, for years. We want them to engage. That is the most common complaint we get all over the city. Uh, and it's a challenge to get the officer to do that, especially when they're by themselves, up against a group of individuals. Uh, because you're right, it's happening and citizens tell me all the time, it happens in front of their eyes. We, we deal with that every week, working on training our officers on number one, use of force. And stop searches and arrest training on how to stop somebody appropriately. And how to make that arrest appropriately against the way we used to do it, which may not have been the right way, but we have now trained all our members on how to do it. The goal is the most, and they get out and do that work now. And yes, it is a challenge because. They, they, they look at the state's attorney's policy about the possession cases and while we used to make a lot of them. Now the focus is the distribution cases on the dealers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you both. Uh, any questions for, uh, Councilman Porter?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Costello.
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, so we're, I really appreciate um the, the amount of work and and thought that you guys put into the responses today. I thought this is a really, really, really helpful. Um, dive into some of the issues that we're seeing and uh just really appreciate um some of the thought and and responses that you gave us today. Um, a couple of the follow ups and I want to make sure we got them down. So um, we wanted to get for the next hearing. The district staffing charts for each of the nine district, uh, each of the districts uh for the month of September. Um, uh, we wanted a little bit more insight on the redistricting plans uh for each of the districts. How we're going about that process and and what to look for. Uh, and one, one thing, I I noted this in my opening statement, but I would love to have. Only a, a slide when we're talking about these top ten posts that we're having issues with. Um, it would be really helpful to have a slide just listing the mountain and um some of the adjoining data that goes with it. Um, with that, any, any closing statements, um, Commissioner Harrison, before we move on to uh Monty?
Uh, I want to thank you and I want to thank the other members of the committee for, for hearing us out of the hour and us to present. And and giving us the opportunity to to ask questions uh so that all of us can can be informed about what's happening in the police department. We appreciate your, your partnership. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Um, next we'll move on to actually the Health Department. Um, yeah, is Commissioner on the line?
I am.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Roser. I guess we're looking, we need your report.
Oh, sure. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Chair Conway. As you mentioned, I am. Uh, the Commissioner of Health for Baltimore City and appreciate this opportunity um to talk briefly about some of the work. Um, that the Health Department is doing to address um violence prevention. Um, so as a background, during the fall and winter of twenty twenty, the Health Department worked in conjunction. Um, with both city and state agencies to develop a strategic framework around addressing violence through public health lens. Um, under Mayor Scott's um direction. Starting in January of this year, we began partnering with. Uh, the newly formed Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement to implement and execute um the city's violence prevention plan. Um, much of the work really focuses on inter-agency collaboration to reduce and prevent violence. We know that violence is preventable. And it's only by working collectively and collaboratively that we can see achievable results. While Director Jackson will provide more background on the statistics and the work, I did want to take a moment and just highlight a recent meeting of executive city and state agency leaders. To review how the Health Department works with our partners to review child fatalities. Um, this is especially timely. Um, given the councilmen's questions around um deaths in young people. Um, so this meeting was attended by the mayor. It was co-led by me and Director Jackson. And our intent was to really review the work of the city's child fatality review. Um, for those who may not be familiar. Um, the city is charged um with reviewing cases of death um in children under the age of eighteen. Um, there are certain members of the committee that are mandated by state law um to participate and be involved. Um, and we begin reconvening um the executive leaders of those agencies. So for example, um, some agencies that are included, of course, BPD. Um, but also inclusive is uh city schools. Um, we also engage community partners as a part of this work. Um, Behavioral Health System Baltimore is another um uh member of this, of this team. So during this meeting, we begin discussing some of the interdisciplinary recommendations to um address violence, again, especially as it relates to. Um, the death of children. Um, Director Jackson's testimony, I think, will speak more to some of the details. Um, and outcomes of this meeting, um, but I did just want to highlight this in particular because I think it speaks to the intentionality behind this multidisciplinary public health. Um, focused approach to addressing uh violence. Um, again, I appreciate the opportunity to partner with Monty and so many other agencies. Um, on this work and thank you for a few minutes to talk.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate uh all, all the work that you, you guys put into the framework and and help when us really think about how we want to structure this piece. Um, with that, we will move on to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, uh, Director Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to members of the committee. I'll be sharing my screen now. And if you can confirm that you can see the screen?
Yep, we can see it. It's a little bit weird right now.
Really?
It's um long vertical.
That's because I have a long monitor. Bear with me for one second. Is that better?
That's perfect.
Awesome. Um, so I'm joined today by Nicholas Wilson, who's the Associate Director of Policy Planning and Coordination for Monty. Both he and I will be talking to you all today for the next couple of minutes. Uh, just to provide some uh background for members of the public that are uh joining us um and or folks who. Aren't familiar with what the office looked like before it became the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Um, wanted to share the scope of work that fell under the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. Um, ahead of Mayor Scott taking um the helm here. So Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice was responsible for. Um, the administration and finance of a lot of city contracts as it relates to public safety, including. Um, our safe streets contracts with community-based organizations, um, supporting. Um, people-based strategies around victimization and survivors associated with sexual assault response, human trafficking and domestic violence. Uh, the office had the budgetary uh responsibility of managing the city watch system. And then obviously um responsible for uh the safe streets implementation and a dotted line uh engagement with ROKA. Back in December of twenty twenty, the mayor established this office, now called the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, or Monty for short. Um, as the Health Commissioner alluded to, literally, um, the business day before I was scheduled to start, uh, she and I and. Um, uh, one of the team members from the Health Department met um to take a look at the framework that the Health Department and other agencies had put together. Um, and I was asked to make that framework, um, something that we could. Um, really bring to the forefront and and build an operation around it. So. Uh, that draft plan was shared with community members back on March fifteenth. We received community feedback for a sixty-day period, having met with well over um three uh dozen different uh groups of folks, many. Micro communities that make up uh the greatness that is our city. And on July twenty-third, the mayor shared that final plan with the community. So it's worth noting um that the comprehensive violence prevention plan is the first. Strategic plan that the city has ever had for um violence prevention. It's a five-year plan. It's effective from July one of this year through June thirty of twenty twenty-six. And it is one that was informed by the consent decree, all five hundred eleven paragraphs. Uh, one that was informed by the transition committee report coming out of the mayor's public safety and health transition committee. Um, one that was informed by the violence prevention framework, as I've mentioned before. By many community uh engagement sessions, and last but not least, by the BPD crime plan that the he- uh, the police commissioner put together back in June of twenty nineteen. Um, it's important for folks to know that the comprehensive violence prevention plan is not a crime plan. Um, that is, it is the violence prevention plan. That the police commissioner's crime plan still stands as uh the plan for the Baltimore Police Department and is a sub-plan. Of the mayor's violence prevention plan. And so taking all of that work, we had to really think through what it was going to take for us to reimagine tomorrow. What was the work that we were going to have to do today? And this became the breadth and the depth of the work that Monty was going to have to undertake. And so. You see the lanes of administration and finance, gun violence. And, and what used to be a policy planning and coordination staying here, but you also see us adding a component associated with community empowerment and opportunity. And so this is where you see the breadth e- expanding. And then each of these lanes, you see the depth of the work expanding. So you see coordination isn't just about. People-based strategies, but also about place-based strategies. It involves coordination of senior level. Um, uh, elected officials and other folks uh that make up our public safety. Uh, mechanism here in Baltimore City around the criminal justice coordination, uh, coordinated committee. Um, and us really digging deep into what would become the group violence uh reduction strategy, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. And so the three pillars of the plan are just very briefly are making sure that we're addressing violence through the lens of public health. And doing that in a way that leans heavily into the provision, provision of direct services and partnering with community-based organizations who are providing those services. Around gun violence prevention, victim services, youth justice, community healing and trauma-informed practice and reentry. The second pillar is to Dr. DeRoz's point, making sure that we're doing the work with each other. And not to each other or for each other. And so bringing both the community and all of the agencies and quasi-agencies together to get that work done. At the local, state and federal level. And then finally, making sure that we're measuring. Uh, our progress and measuring the work that we're evaluating ourselves and holding each other accountable. Um, in ways that are transparent to the community. Worth noting is that as a part of this violence prevention plan, we knew that we had a lot of work to undertake. And so this is just a visual representation of all of the work baked into this strategy. So that it's really clear how the pieces all fit together. Uh, we are not just throwing darts to see what works. We've thought. Uh, very deeply and long about the components necessary to build an ecosystem uh to get us to a place where. Um, uh, folks are living healthy, thriving, safe lives. We've also thought about who it's gonna take to get us to the point of doing that work. And here is another visualization where you see at the center of it, our residents. Our greatest asset here in Baltimore City, being supported by the mayor, being supported by the White House, being supported by the governor's office, being supported by community residents. That it's gonna take all of us to do this work together. So let's jump into uh pillar one. Um, what you're looking at right now is a. A screen clip version, if you will, of page twenty-seven of the Violence Prevention Plan. Uh, page twenty-seven is the year one timeline associated with the work. And so on each of the next couple of slides, you're gonna see this January twenty-third. Line uh where we made the announcement and introduced the plan. You're gonna see where we are. Um, and I'm gonna talk about, um, I'm gonna provide a high-level update on uh a couple of key pieces of the strategy. With us spotlighting exactly what the council indicated that it wants to hear about, the group violence reduction strategy and how uh. Residents are participating in helping us do the work. So for pillar one, um, we said that what we were gonna do was step through the child fatality review expansion. You've. Heard about that from the Health Commissioner, so I won't belabor that point. The sidestep youth diversion work is well underway. In fact, we received a. A, a couple of grants from partners and we are currently recruiting for what will be Baltimore's first time ever pre-arrest. Youth diversion program that uses community-based assets um to migrate young people away from the criminal justice system. It's worth noting that Baltimore City is two times as likely as the surrounding jurisdictions to send our young people into the criminal justice system. Uh, we are actively working on the relaunch, or I'm sorry, the launch of the Reentry Action Network. Uh, I've recently visited. With one of the facilities in Jessup. We are negotiating a contract with the Department. Of uh Public Safety and Corrections to make sure that we are able to employ returning citizens three months before they come home. Um, and to um make sure that we're stepping through the work of uh qualifying them for civil service as potential city employees. Uh, the nine-one-one diversion pilot, it sounds like you'll be getting an update on that in the coming months. And uh, the expansion of victim services infrastructure, we haven't started this work yet. I probably should talk about the color codes here. So. Green means that we've started the work and we're well on target and the black means that we haven't started the work yet. Um, and then the group violence reduction strategy, let's go into that next slide as a spotlight. So, yep.
Director Jackson, is, is it okay if uh after we touch on uh the group violence reduction strategy, that we allow folks to ask questions?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm happy to pause in between pillars.
Okay, so I'll let you finish up.
Great. So what you all are taking a look at is um a copy of the monthly dashboard that we provide to what we call the tri-party sponsors. Uh, the tri-party sponsors are the mayor, the police commissioner, and the state's attorney, as you can see here by our joint logo. Um, since August, um, uh, one of the technical assistance providers, Jeremy Biddle, and I have been meeting. With the tri-party sponsors along with Deputy Mayor Schnitzer to go over the status of the strategy and to make sure that the three of them are. Um, as, as well informed as they need to be and that they're making decisions together. Uh, because we know uh why we've seen past um failures of this strategy and we want to ensure that that doesn't happen going forward. So what you're looking at right now um is that uh we are targeting a launch of GBRAS in the Western by the fourth quarter of this year. That right now our overall status is fifty-eight percent complete. We're, we're green lighting a lot of stuff. You'll see a couple of things here we've already completed. I do want to say uh just upfront that this dashboard does not list everything that we have to do for GBRAS. It is the work that we're actively doing. And so this is the, the pre-launch work, if you will. The dashboard will change uh as things come off, new items will go on. Um, as we move into. The dashboard will change uh as things come off, new items will go on um, as we move into the subsequent phases of work. So just just by way of providing a high-level overview, um, you see in in green first, um, that the community dialogues that we have scheduled, that BIC-MIC is gonna be hosting around the entire city to provide education around what the group violence reduction strategy is and to answer questions of residents, have all been scheduled. We started socializing those with residents in the Western about a couple of weeks ago. Um, the flyer has just been finalized today and will be made public. Um, there will be five uh in-person sessions and one virtual session to begin. The next green item that you see is around the communications plan. I'm sure that folks saw both the the mayor's op-ed around the Violence Prevention Plan and then the tri-party sponsors' joint op-ed on the Violence Prevention Plan, I'm sorry, on GBRAS. Um, in the coming weeks, you'll see us uh do a lot more around community education. We've designed some flyers, we're working through, that will go social. Um, we're we're working through um some some TV and some some print media right now to make sure that we can get in front of as many folks as possible, along with the community sessions that BIC-MIC is hosting, so that we're educating folks about uh what the strategy is. Ultimately, we want Baltimoreans to name it. Um, for those that have been around for a while, you know that it used to be called Operation Ceasefire. We can't call that, we can't call it that anymore for obvious reasons. Uh, but what we do know is that when you are a part of naming something, you're a part of owning it. Um, the two items that are checked off here, obviously, we had a partners' meeting um, last Monday, and we had about seventy-five partners from all over the country uh come and get baseline, if you will, around what the strategy is, what it isn't. Uh, we were able to go through the problem analysis with those folks um, and to answer questions about how we're all going to uh work together. Um, the next item here around the executive-level socialization of the problem analysis is that we've not only briefed the tri-party sponsors, but we've also now um delivered the um problem analysis information to uh the executive team members of the mayor, the police commissioner, the US uh state's attorney's office, and the state's attorney's office. Um, we are going to be doing another round of problem analysis, socialization uh with um members of the mayor's cabinet, and we're looking forward to scheduling some time with this body to do the same thing. And then um, these four items here that are yellow, uh, the first three really revolve around staffing. Um, all of them, as you can see, are trending up. Uh, MONC is in the process of interviewing for its last two positions that would support this work uh this week, and will be wrapping up so that we can make an offer no later than Monday. Um, the BPD, um, GBU is at sixty-eight percent complete and is being incrementally staffed. Um, we've gotta make sure that, you know, as we move um officers out of one position, that there are other officers that are coming out of the academy or or transferring from other roles can slide into slots that are being vacated. Uh, it's important to note that this is not an additional increase to BPU. This is a reallocation of staff. It's also important to note the level of rigor around the interview process for this unit to make sure that we're getting the right folks to participate. And then around Yap, Yap's hired everyone that they need to hire except for one position. And after they're finished with their hiring, which is supposed to be in the next week, we'll really start to dig into training um for them with our technical assistance providers that include ROKA locally, but also include partners nationally. And our technical advisor to the White House on Community Violence Intervention Programming also happens to be a technical advisor for this GBRAS work. So I will pause here uh and swallow some spit, and I'm happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Awesome. Thank you, Director Jackson. Um, I I'm I'm gonna start off with uh quick quick questions. Um, first, um, a very pointed one. You 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 said this already, but I wanna make sure I heard it correctly. Um, we're at fifty-eight percent complete. When do we expect to be finished with the implement implementation and launch of um, GBRAS in the Western District?
So, we're fifty-eight percent complete in the preparation work that we're doing to be ready for launch. We are targeting launch, as indicated here in the slide, for the fourth quarter of this year. It's probably pretty small, but it's here, and I'm happy to share the slides after the fact, sir.
Yes, um, that was another thing I I meant to ask. Well, if you could share the slides with the committee uh for folks that, I know my eyes are, I guess technically good, but not that good. Um, so yeah, it it we we expect to have it fully launched by late winter.
We expect to have GBRAS launching in the Western as a pilot, right? So when we say, in my mind, fully launched means that we're all, we are across Baltimore City. We are expecting to launch the pilot in the Western District by the fourth quarter of this year.
Okay. Uh, and fully launch across the whole city, do we have that timeline?
We do not. Um, data, data's gonna tell us when we're ready to do that launch.
Okay. Uh, and then uh, a different question is, um, can you tell us a little bit about the problem analysis? I know you guys did a problem analysis in in West Baltimore. Um, can you tell us, talk to us about the findings there and recommendations from that analysis?
Um, yes, I can, and and I would offer uh to uh just a a repeat of, you know, wanting to make sure that uh we've got some time when the Public Safety Committee meets next so that the technical advisor that's working uh with us on me is able to present, co-present with me. Um, we'd like to make sure that we've got some dedicated time to share the problem analysis with you all. It's pretty lengthy. Um, I would say, um, for obvious reasons, we're starting in the Western um, and taking a look at uh the number of homicides and shootings between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty. Um, the Western topped um all nine of our BPD districts with a total of eight hundred eighteen. Um, five hundred fifty-one of those were shootings, two hundred sixty-six of those were homicides. And we know that between that time period, almost sixteen percent of the citywide homicides and shootings um happen in the Western. And so if there's a question about why start in the Western, it's because it's it's historically been our most violent um, um, district. Um, other things that I think are worth sharing as a highlight uh is that we are, um, we are seeing that both a homicide and non-fatal shooting victims and suspects um, tend to be individuals who are criminal justice system involved um, or who have been criminal justice system involved, who had um, uh, charges um, uh, associated with um violent activity uh in the past. About thirty-nine percent of the victims um and the suspects who we tracked in the data had committed a shooting in less than one year of release after incarceration. So that's another data point uh worth sharing. Um, I would also share with folks that, um, tw- about twenty percent of the motives that we were able to determine associated with uh the problem analysis really resulted in ongoing or resulted from ongoing personal disputes. And so when when we hear the narrative that a lot of the gun-related activity is directly uh tied to uh drug activity, um, the numbers that we're that we're looking at so far don't bear that out. Um, and while drug-related disputes um do fall in the top five, um, it's not the the primary reason why we're seeing this happen. It's worth noting that just because someone um, is involved in drug dealing doesn't mean that the reason why the shooting happened was drug-related. Uh, in a lot of cases, we're seeing it be um, a matter of disrespect or um, you know, someone's ex-partner is with someone else, to the point that you all made earlier about domestic violence-related activity. Uh, we're also seeing um internal group disputes be one of the motives associated with this that have absolutely nothing to do with um, the the drug industry, if you will. Um, and I think that the final thing that's probably worth sharing uh with folks is that we know that folks who are, two final things. Um, that it's important for us, and we'll we'll get to this when we when we talk to you all, councilmen, um, in greater detail, is important to understand the differentiation between a gang and a group. Um, because folks are group-involved does not mean that they are a member of a gang. In fact, Baltimore City doesn't have many gangs. We have many groups. It's um equal, um, equally important for folks to know that just because you're group-involved doesn't mean that the group is violent. There are some groups that are not violent and groups that are. The last point that I'll make um here is that in twenty twenty, the risk of being shot, if you were involved in a group that was known to be violent, was seventeen more, seventeen times more likely than anybody else in the Western District. Um, and so you asked about, um, you know, just wrap-up thoughts here. That um, what we have found is that um, the the age group where we're seeing uh this uh impact our city in the Western the most is is not the twenty-four and and younger age group, is twenty-five to thirty-five-year-olds. In fact, we're seeing the average age be thirty to thirty-two. Um, and we're dealing with mostly black males who are well-known to the criminal justice system. Um, and that the groups are relatively small that we're talking about, but they generate a bulk of the serious violence uh in our city. And in fact, of the groups uh that we assessed, um, we saw a small fraction of the groups make up a large number of the non-fatal shootings uh and um homicides in in the Western District based on our analysis.
Very, very, very helpful insights, and I look forward to getting a deeper dive um at a later date from you guys, once you're prepared to do that. But um, it's some of those things not surprises, some of those things, um, even even though we know them, still surprising to know, uh, given it's typically small groups. Um, to that end, I'm gonna open the floor to questions from the committee. Uh, Councilwoman Ramos, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Director, for really all that you're doing. Um, you know, going through the data, I know is uh, go, you can go through a lot of different um, layers, uh, and so I appreciate your your work on this. I had a question specifically following up on an email I sent you and several others. Um, my district right now is suffering from carjackings, and they are being done by young people. And they're being done by young people who have done this before. So to me, this is a colossal failure of the system to be able to help these young people get out of the situation and stop doing this. They're doing it again, they'll get caught, and then they'll come back out, and they'll do it again. And I refuse to let that happen. I need your help to, we, we have a feeling, we know where these young people are, and they're in my district. And I feel very strongly, and so do actually some of the victims of the carjackings, that we can, we have to break this cycle. And it sounds like from what you're doing in in other parts of the city, um, that's exactly what you're trying to do. Um, but I wanna be your partner and to really understand how to do this now with these young people, because we don't want them to be the thirty-five-year-olds that are familiar with the system. And um, so I uh hope that we can, that we can, you know, our office will reach out to your office to try to figure this out. This is not my field. I would just put everybody in stable housing and think that's what's gonna be the best thing, which I still do. But in this case, we need, you know, some specific, um, um, you know, some specific work to be done to help the families, to help the young people, um, because I don't want them in the justice system after this. Uh, and that's, that's a, that's a very big thing for me. So I hope that, um, I know you, again, you're concentrating on one population, but for me, if we don't get these young people out of the system, they're gonna be your thirty-five-year-olds that are doing this. And um, so, um, you know, again, this isn't my field, so I look to you for guidance as to where, what do we do? You know, what do we, a- and I've actually asked the police not to go do those, you know, knock-and-talks. The police showing up your door, really? Is that gonna be helpful?
Can you, can you get to the question?
Probably better if I do. So, anyway, I'm hoping that there's a a way that there are other programs that you're working on to be able to help with this particular situation.
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you for your comment, Councilwoman. Absolutely, MONC stands ready to uh to partner with you and any other um, uh, councilperson and or resident as it relates to um, making sure that we uh ensure the safety of every single resident. Um, while we're spotlighting GBRAS right now, I do wanna remind the the uh council members that youth justice is very much baked into the Violence Prevention Plan um, and focuses not only on pre-arrest diversion that we talked about, but also focuses on even before we get down that path, how are we making sure that our young folks are um, um, getting um, taken care of socially and emotionally as it relates to their development? How are we um, making sure that we're taking the opportunity to um steer young people away from activity without having them be criminal justice uh justice system involved? Um, what conversations are we having at a community level around um which type of justice we should be deploying? Because there are four different types of justice, right? And so as we talk about public safety, historically, we're thinking about distributive justice, which is lock 'em up. But we also know that there is restorative justice. And to the extent that communities are open to having conversations with young folks about what restitution looks like and order provide what um, uh, provide family supports or parental supports in spaces that are necessary, that is um something that we also account for in the Violence Prevention Plan and something that's very important to the mayor.
Thank you, um, and we'll be reaching out again to work with you on this, um, uh, cuz it's very targeted, so I appreciate that. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. That was it for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Um, uh, and before I move to other questions from folks, I wanna ask if you guys keep the opening to your question uh pretty short so we can allow the director to finish her presentation. Uh, Councilman Burnett?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, uh, Director Jackson. Um, so I I and I know, um, you you said the data is gonna sort of guide the 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 work moving forward, which is encouraging to hear. Um, the question I had uh was that statistics show that homicides decline between thirty and sixty percent in places that have successfully implemented the group violence reduction strategy? Uh, is there an average timeframe that is documented on how long it took this pla- these places to see results that you, your agency is looking at as sort of a a guiding guiding star?
And and this is why you are the best councilman ever. Um, if folks can't tell, I live in District Eight. Um, or District Great, as we call it, yes, um, there is an average timeframe that we're looking at. Um, I would say that we've typically seen um progress when we look at the model nationally between four and six months. I do want us to be very careful about making sure that as we do these quarterly check-ins that um, that we're holding each other accountable and accounting for um the variability here in Baltimore City. Um, we, we tried to do this two times before, just like um, uh, one of our TA cities has tried to do this two times before. And so it's gonna be more critical than ever that we continue to have the political will that's necessary to push this forward and that we don't get distracted. We, we saw the trajectory of of um homicides and shootings going down in twenty fourteen, the last time we tried it. Uh, and quite frankly, we saw the uprising happen after the death of uh Freddie Gray in police custody and uh the war room changing, right, um, priority changing. Um, we've seen the same thing uh in Oakland for folks who um, have heard us talk about um Oakland being very similar to Baltimore and that they tried two times before, uh, before they got it right. Um, and then saw a fifty percent reduction over a sustained period of time. Um, I think that it's worth sharing with the council that in the first quarter of twenty twenty, so January through March of twenty twenty, Oakland was looking at a thirty-eight percent decrease in homicides year over year. And then they did what we did in twenty fourteen. The pandemic hit all of the United States, and their resource allocation shifted. And so for folks that are talking about- And so for folks that are talking about, you know, look at Oakland now, we're seeing Oakland now looking back to re adopting the GPRS strategy because they know it's one that works and they know that it's one that they, for lack of a better word, got distracted from because of all of the hell that COVID wreaked on all of the United States. And so I want what I'm paying attention to as the the owner for GPRS from the mayor's perspective is making sure that our tri-party sponsors maintain the level of political will necessary, that we're delivering the community-based wraparound supports that we say that we're going to deliver because we didn't do that well the last time. And that we have a BPD GBU that is sufficiently trained in what it takes to actually do the level of direct communication with the population that we're serving in ways that don't dehumanize them.
Well, I look forward to continuing.
Question, I'm sorry.
So I thought our response, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Cohen, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Jackson. Knowing that we have tried this strategy twice in the past, and as you said, really didn't stick with it. I'm curious, and I've heard you and others say that in the past, we really didn't put enough into the resource restorative, the sort of track where we try to get people out of the criminal justice system and provide them with alternatives. And as a result, the strategy failed. I'm curious, this time around, do you have a sense of what resources it would take in order to do this right? And I know you've been building a great number of partnerships, but I'm just thinking in terms of financial sustainability and what it's going to cost and where funds are going to come from. Because I imagine it's an expensive proposition, but it's far cheaper if we can keep folks away from violence.
Thanks for your question. It sounds like there are two questions in there. The first around partnership collaboration that we've been developing. Absolutely, that's been happening. The team's been having conversations with partners in DHCD and the Housing Authority of Baltimore and the Mayor's Office of Employment Development to make sure that we can work through transitional employment and housing relocations, when and if we need to. We started to have some early conversations about how we bring in the development community to make sure that if folks need to be relocated, that we can do that as well. So there have been a whole host of conversations that we've been having associated with a level of partnership that will be necessary in order to get the work done. With regard to funding, one the first funding decision that I made when I came into the office after an RFP was solicited was to award Yap Youth Advocate Programs one point two million dollars to be the service provider for this population in the Western District to provide full wraparound supports, including life coaching, including resource management, including workforce development, including all of those pieces. And so Yap is almost fully staffed with a director with with an associate director, with outreach workers, with life coaches and with a business developer who's going to be the one that partners with private and and public employers to make sure that we're getting folks to this place of readiness. The other thing worth mentioning is that our local philanthropy is very much a partner. They have dedicated a decent amount of resources across the first three years of this initiative. We're fully funded for the or for the first year as a result of dollars that were allocated between them and between the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. The funders have recently asked me what their re-up needs to be. And so there is absolutely a level of interest in continuing to fund this work. You're right, the price tag is a hefty one, and I am confident that the mayor will deliver on his promise to make sure that Baltimore City has the funding that it needs to reduce violence in our communities. The last thing that I'll close by saying is is just to remind the council that Baltimore City is one of sixteen cities selected by the White House to participate in the Community Violence Intervention Collaborative. I I am the the mayor's primary point of contact into the White House. And we know that there is a is a is a strong interest, a a push for making sure that the appropriate level of funding is going to community violence intervention in its entirety.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Jackson, and look forward to hearing, you know, even a more precise budget number eventually soon. Appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Glover, any questions?
No, sorry. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Any questions?
No, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Costello. Okay, we will move on. I I actually have two quick ones in in. First, can you tell me a little bit more about where we are with building out the Neighborhood Stat program described in the plan?
That's actually something that we cover in Pillar Three, and it's the spotlight for Pillar Three, if you're okay with me walking down that path.
Sure. And then I think tied to that question and tied to a previous question I asked earlier about DV Stat. Do do we know where that would be hosted? I know previously DV Stat was managed out of City Stat. Would that be something that's managed out of City Stat, or that would be handled within the Police Department? And maybe someone from BPD can answer that question as well.
So I would say that given the role of the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation as a partner with both me and and BPD, that there would be shared responsibility associated with the capture, the performance reporting of the data.
Sure, I know I'll be a little more pointed. I know BP, for instance, has ComStat. It's separate and totally totally separate from City Stat, and the stats run under City Stat. I'm curious, is this something that would be captured within BPD's internal processes or in sort of in in coordination with the mayor's office? Or is this something much like other City Stat programs in the past that would be would be managed by City Stat?
I can jump in for now, and I can be corrected by the BPD. But currently, all of the domestic violence data that I get that on the victim service team uses to make our decisions, we get from Police Stat. Right now, DV is part of that Police Stat. I will say that there is still quite a bit of work to go since the record management system was transferred over to make sure that the BPD is sharing exactly the information that we need and our partners need, making sure that the partners are that the information that they're receiving and gathering is connecting to that. So there is some work to do, but I'm actually excited to that in anticipation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we did partner with Police Stat to try to dig into some of the numbers. And the number that we are currently in 2021, we know that intimate partner violence accounts for more than twenty percent of all violent crime in Baltimore City. And twenty percent was the number we were using. But as we drill down closer to the data and seeing that other DV-related intimate partner violence-related numbers were still being categorized differently, if you look at it in some neighborhoods, especially the ones that are disproportionately impacted by poverty and other types of crime, IPV can account for up to thirty percent or even more of all of all violent crime in those neighborhoods. And so we are, my team is looking to add a lot more data capabilities and data managers so that way we can make sure that our issue experts are in all the data conversations. That way, the indicators that we're looking for are accurate. But yeah, there's a lot of progress and partnership that's been being made on that as we go along.
Sure, I appreciate the insight. It sounds like you guys are doing some work there. I I just want to know who sort of owns it so that we can make sure that we're following up with the appropriate party going forward. And I'm not sure if that's you guys, if that's City Stat, or that's BPD. But I would love to get to the bottom of that if we can just get get some sort of follow up. And maybe that involves a conversation with, you know, OPI in order to make sure it makes sense. But yeah, I would just love to get an answer on that.
Yeah, I'll take that as a follow up along with sharing the slides.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then I'll let you continue. And if if you could, I hate to rush you, but if you could move along just so folks, if they have any closing questions before before the end of the day, we can get to it.
Yep. So Pillar Two is the Community Engagement and Interagency Coordination Pillar. To your question about Neighborhood Stat, this space where you see Conduct CBO Analysis is the beginning of that. We are negotiating contracts right now associated with the landscape analysis, having a full understanding that we're dealing with about thirty four hundred community-based organizations that are 501(c) threes in Baltimore City, not counting for those that are fiscally sponsored and mom and pop shops that operate out of their pocket. And so this will be step one associated with getting us to Neighborhood Stat. When we talk about Pillar Three, I'll talk to you about where we are around GPRS Stat. Again, just as a reminder here on the color codes, because I won't spend too much time talking about it so that we can get to questions. The black indicates things that are on target but that we haven't started yet. The greens indicates things that we have started and are on target, and the red indicates things that we have started but will be delayed in their implementation. So I'll talk about the neighborhood, the Coordinated Neighborhood Stabilization Response, and then I'll turn it over to Nick to talk briefly about our our highlight space. So this answers one of the questions that Councilman Glover asked about making sure that we're responding to neighbor neighborhoods where we're seeing an increase in traumatic events like shootings. What are we thinking about from a mental health perspective? This coordinated neighborhood stabilization response is going to be piloted based on four conditions. One is a major law enforcement takedown happens in a community. We see a power vacuum erupt that could potentially explode into more violence. Two, we see the the shooting or homicide of a person that is under eighteen years old. Three, we see a police involved shooting. And four, we see multiple victims of gunshots in a singular event. And so this involves mobilizing not only city agencies but community-based response as well and will require a lot of data to really drive which agencies we're tagging in, which community-based organizations we're partnering with. And so we'll be using two one one, three one one, and nine one one data to really drive this. This will have us on the ground for a forty five day period in these neighborhoods, different agencies at different points, community-based resources throughout the entire period, and us tracking our stabilization efforts, if you will, over the course of six months by partnering with a community-based asset to help us with that. So I'll turn it over to Nick next as he spotlights the Public Safety Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Director Jackson. So the Public Safety Advisor Commission is legislatively mandated to meet quarterly, but the group is very enthusiastic, and they've been meeting monthly for ninety minutes. But even that's not enough time, especially over Zoom and with technical difficulties. And so I'm happy to say that there was a very productive strategic planning session that occurred on September eleventh. It was a Saturday. We accomplished a lot in four hours, including committee structures, bylaws, starting to prioritize the topics. Since some of our friends at the BPD are online, I would like to just say I've been really pleased with the quality of dialogue and openness, not only between the community members that were very well vetted by the City Council, but as well as the police representatives, Major Jeffrey Shorter, Vanguard, Colonel Kevin Jones, and especially Elliot Cohen of FOP have been really rocks, he's been a rock star, contributing in every single way. There's been great conversations. I just want to highlight a few things that you might hear about in the City Council report that's coming to you guys in November. One is there's a lot of concern by the community members about officer well-being, about the vicarious trauma, and really exploring ways to encourage law enforcement to speak about their feelings and find support either from other officers or in other communities. The challenge of recruitment and staffing officers, we see this as an opportunity for PISA to be able to, in collaboration with BPD, find ways to recruit qualified Baltimore City residents to join the department. We're specifically looking at how to partner with HBCUs to support and strengthen ongoing and existing efforts to educate and recruit students to join. There was one thing that we talked a lot about was risk of duplication. And so we're really thinking about, and part of my responsibility is helping the the members to figure out how this work can support other efforts that are currently going underway, like the Neighborhood Policing Plans, GPRS, youth diversion efforts. On one area we have started to explore is the Civilian Oversight Review Board. There was a lot of concern that the process of making recommendations is great, but not hearing the results and the outcomes. There are ways maybe to be more transparent and to ensure that these existing boards are being effective. And so as I said, PISA will submit its first report of recommendations to City Council in November. I really want to thank Chairman Conway for his participation in making sure that we understand that despite this is just the first, you know, few months, there's still high expectations because this work is very important, and we need to to move this forward. So after we submit the report in November, I hope everyone here will have a greater understanding to the structure and scope of the PISA's work that we're going to undertake for the next several years. And that will be an opportunity for to share feedback with us and maybe engage Chairman Conway with other feedback and ideas. And PISA members, they know there's a lot of work that they need to do to lay the groundwork to be effective. But they're really eager to go out into the communities and collaborate. And since City Council members are a lot of kind of the eyes and ears and voices of different residents, we would love to find ways to collaborate moving forward.
So happy to answer any questions here on Pillar Two. Thanks, Nick.
Any questions from folks before we move forward? Just feel free to speak up, and I'll acknowledge you. All right, no questions. We can move along.
And so the last pillar is about evaluation and accountability. We are actually wrapping up our Safe Streets evaluation. As I speak, we are well on target. The evaluation was to be completed by nine thirty. So I'm going to be taking a look at that report of the cultural and operational environments in our ten sites and the community-based organizations that support those ten sites so that we can share our report with the with the public in the coming weeks. We're starting to work on the implementation of GPRS Stat, and I'll be spotlighting that in a minute. And we haven't started our annual listening tours, but we are well on target to start those in the winter. And so as we think about GPRS Stat, it's it's important to share with you all what the governance structure is going to look like as it relates to GPRS. As I alluded to in Pillar One, the Tri-Agency Principles are folks that we meet with on a monthly basis, and their job is to make sure that we don't have any roadblocks and that there's a singular voice as we navigate through making sure that we're focusing on violence reduction. Steering Committee is going to be meeting quarterly and will take a look at our performance reviews. They'll be giving us resources, and they'll make sure that we've got that that cross collaboration that we're going to require. So the Steering Committee will be made up of every single agency, funder, all a representative, one representative from every organization, agency group that was a partner in the partners meeting that we had on Monday. And so we'll we'll have a representative from the DEA, from the ATF, from the mayor's office, from the funding groups, from the state's attorney's office. And that'll be that group. This group will also be the group that helps us identify the KPIs that we'll be drilling into. And I'm going to share some initial KPIs with you all in a minute that will be drilled into to make sure that we're getting the work right. And then the the Strategy Team or the Implementation Team, this is the team that's on the ground doing the work and is made up of the GBU or the law enforcement team, along with the state's attorney's team, our outreach and support team, community engagement team, our systems team, and our direct communications team. And so as we think through the overall objectives associated with the violence prevention And so as we think through the overall objectives associated with the Violence Prevention Plan, we know that the mayor is committed to a fifteen percent annual reduction in both homicides and non-fatal shootings. As a part of the GBRAS work, we want to see reduced recidivism and improved qualities of life for folks. We want to see outcomes that are are healthy and we want to see improved police and community relations. So our initial KPIs, and keep in mind that we literally just came up with these KPIs on the heels of the partners' meeting. And so these are the the shortlist, and we know that we've got to be more expansive than this. But based on the timeline, we're exactly where we're supposed to be. We're we're supposed to be starting to identify those KPIs right now. A percentage change in the year-to-date homicides in the area that we're implementing in, right? And so we would want to see, that's what I meant when I said, how do you know when we're ready to scale? The the question that you asked me earlier, Chairman, the data's going to tell me that. The commitment of the principals is going to tell me that, us being able to break through barriers and make decisions and navigate quickly. So we absolutely want to see a year-to-date change in the homicides in the pilot space. We want to see the non-fatal percentages go down. The number and the percentage of GBRAS referrals is also going to be a KPI for us. If you think about, you know, the number of call-in folks that we invite versus who show up, right? How are we identifying folks? How are we contacting them as the direct communication working well? Are they enrolled in life coaching? Are they staying enrolled after three months, after six months? Are we providing the supports that we need to? In addition to that, who gets rearrested? What does recidivism look like? And for those that get rearrested, even a breakdown around, are they being rearrested for violent offenses? Are they victimized by gun violence themselves? And then finally, the number of call-ins, the attendees, who's accepting the services? Who's turning it down? Who's referring another group-involved individual because of the services that they're getting, right? I was able to step away for real this time because they actually gave me the transitional employment that they said that they were going to give me the last time. Or we're seeing folks say, there's no need for us to be out there anymore because I'm having real conversations with my life coach about the family supports that I need that had me on the corner anyway. And so you should have a conversation with these folks to also become a part of this program. So this is just a sneak peek into what we're thinking about around KPIs and a snapshot of the governance structure that we're looking to put in place. I welcome your questions.
Awesome, thank you, Director Jackson, for for giving us a full rundown of where we are and how we got there. You you guys actually answered a number of my questions in the presentation. So I will turn it over to any other members who have questions to follow up with, to put forward thus far. Councilman Ramos, any questions? Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Jackson. You mentioned doing some annual.
Uh, one one moment, Director, can you please take down the presentation?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No worries, thank you. You mentioned doing some annual listening sessions. Are you going to be doing those similar to how you did it when we first gave input into the plan? So all fourteen districts, or are you going to do it in a different way?
It'll be done in a different way. We are actually going to be looking to go into all of the neighborhoods in Baltimore City. And this is something that we want to involve residents in doing with us. And so that's not going to stop us, obviously, from the mayor conducting town halls. I believe that there's already been another set of town halls that have been scheduled for council districts. And so this is on top of that. We want to make sure that we're truly able to engage with folks in ways that build community, right? And using residents that live in neighborhoods to actually participate in doing the listening tours with us.
Thank you. I know that's going to be a big job for your folks because we have a lot of neighborhoods, very active and engaged, which is a good thing. So we'll be happy to help any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilmember.
I don't have any questions on the front, thank you.
Councilman Cohen?
All set, thank you, sir.
Looks like a bunch, it seems like a bunch of folks got kicked off the meeting. We'll move forward regardless. I think next up would be Councilwoman Porter.
No additional questions, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Excellent, I don't see any other members on the call, thanks to them getting kicked off, unfortunately. But with that, we're we're going to go into recess, but I really wanted to thank you, Director Jackson, and BPD for for really all the hard work you guys are doing. We're not quite where we want to be yet, I think we can all be honest about that. But I think we are doing yeoman's work to get to where we need to be. And I look forward to continuing to work with you all to make sure that we are doing everything in our power to make our city safe as possible. So any other, any closing statements from Director Jackson, Commissioner Harrison, before we we close up?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank you all and the and the council members for your continued partnership. I appreciate knowing that we can reach out to you all at any point in time to make sure that residents know about the work that's going on. And I would offer that we want to be a resource to you all as well. So in in cases where Monty or his predecessor weren't necessarily your first thought to reach into, I'm going to ask you all to lean heavily into us as the partner to do this work.
Likewise, I think we're all here to to be resources to each other. And certainly, I I think every single person on this council wants to be a part of the solution. So don't hesitate to reach out to any of us, of course. And if there are things that we could do to make you more effective as an office or same thing goes for for BPD, don't hesitate to tickle our brains on that. Then we're going to close here. This this hearing is in recess. I hope you guys have a wonderful, wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you.